Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting, July 25, 2022. We will begin tonight, as we usually do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Clerk, if you would.
Read us.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I will begin with the reading of the agenda. We will begin with Department and Board updates, approving the election warrant for September, adopting federal awards policies, approving an Assistant Cemetery Superintendent position, and then discussing potential restructuring of the Finance Department. This will be followed by public input and members' updates. At 7:00 PM, we have scheduled a joint meeting with the Board of Health to discuss pandemic response strategies and the potential approval of a memorandum of agreement for the Public Health Coordinator position. At 7:30, we have an informational presentation on Shaker Lane truck exclusion and a discussion regarding sites for tennis courts. At 8:00 PM, licensing and permits, Nine Air Road, discussion of the earth-removal permit and amending a one-day liquor license for Steve's Catering. At 8:15, Select Board discussions, update and discussion about the Nogog Orchard from the Ad Hoc Working Group, and a discussion for forming a committee to explore real estate tax relief. Then we have the Town Administrator update to approve an amendment to our contract with LLB for the Senior Center, request to use the roads for the American Diabetes Tour to Cure, request to use the roads for Bikes Not Bombs, and a discussion to execute an initial compliance certification with the, for the Shaker Lane Elementary School. Finally, we'll approve Minutes at 9:15. I'd also like to welcome Ryan. Congratulations, hi.
Thank you, hello.
First meeting, it's very exciting.
Yes, it is, yes, it is, thank you.
Don't screw up.
Screw up.
And we do have one member who's joining us remotely today, Mr. Ronbacher. Hello. Mr. Unsaldi, do you want to kick it off with the mail?
Sure. We actually only have one thing to talk about. It's just the notice of openings to our appointed boards. And there was just one addition on to this. There's one opening in the PMBC Permanent Municipal Building Committee. So we're still looking for representatives for these various committees. You can go to the website and sign up at any point in time, and then we would bring it before the Board to fill some of those positions.
Thank you very much. All right, Department updates. Let's begin with the town clerk and the election warrant.
Evening. I inquiry 74 King Street. Before you, this evening, you have the warrant for the September 6 election, which I'm asking you to accept and sign and take a vote for it to be posted by the Constable.
Thank you. Any comments from the Board? All right. I guess we're ready for a motion.
I move the Select Board vote to approve the Commonwealth of Massachusetts election warrant for the September 6, 2022 state primary.
And we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. DeCoste?
Did I second that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second?
You can second it, yes.
Okay, I'm going to do that.
All right. Moved by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. Mr. DeCoste?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Napoli?
Yes.
Mr. Ronbacher?
Yes.
And Chair is in favor, it passes 5 to 0. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. All right, Finance Department.
I'm texting her right now.
Okay, we can move, should we skip it?
Why don't we do that? I think she's locked out of her office.
Oh, dear. Let's do the Assistant Cemetery Superintendent position then next. Do we have someone from the Cemetery Commission?
And we should have.
Oh, nope.
Yay!
Just kidding, Andrew.
Sorry.
Do over. Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Blackboard. Just wanted to... I printed in color, but that room is locked, so I had to reprint it in black and white.
Hold it up, Mark. It's like a screenshot, Mark.
Good evening, sorry for the pause while I give you handouts. So the first one we're going to go over is, tonight is Town of Littleton, our federal grant policy and procedures that I would like to have integrated into the financial policies. The reason I want to have this done, and I created this, is because we received $3 million in APPA funding. We also have CARES funding, and the federal government requires a different type of procurement than the state of Massachusetts. In fact, it's much more stringent. So I wanted to make sure we had the proper policies and procedures in place, so as we're going through and spending the money, there's no reason for the federal government to say you didn't follow our way of doing it, you didn't follow the OMB circular, so we're going to take those funds back. Any questions?
Yeah. Are the procurement policies the only ones that are different, substantially different? Because there are a number of other policies that are written into this.
Right. So they have internal control policies, financial reporting policies, monitoring and reporting performance policies, payment, equipment, cost principles. All of that is in here, just to show that we're in compliance. So when we're having an audit done, because we, I'm suspecting not in addition to our regular auditors, but federal auditors are going to come out and audit these funds, that we're in compliance to all their laws and regulations, not just the state of Massachusetts laws and regulations.
Yes, so currently, we were missing that, our financial policies, because we really didn't have very many federal grants before that, if any. So what this would be is inserted into the Select Board's rules and regulations as that, I think it's a fourth section of the policies.
Okay. Are there any questions from the rest of the Board about this?
I think the supporting documents from Lanson were helpful. Appreciate that.
I guess the only question is, is this specific to the current climate, or is this something that'll hold the test of time anytime we receive federal grants?
For right now, it will hold. But if they change anything, I would have to update it, just like if the governor updated the modernization bill, so instead of $10,000 and $50,000, we do more.
Yep.
If they updated it, we would need to update these. So I'd need to stay on top of the federal.
Okay, thanks.
Mark, do you have any questions?
My only question is, are we going to somehow merge these policies, the federal and everything else, into one? Because it's still, I was a little confused with what we end up with, what we're...
Yes, I've been given the task by Town Administrator Anthony Unsaldi to go through the financial policies to redline and update the policy so that everything runs smoothly and is correct and up to date.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll just pick the most stringent of the two, for example, if there's a difference between Massachusetts and the federal? You'll pick the more restrictive, I assume?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? All right.
Move the Select Board vote to adopt the federal grants policies and procedures included in the Select Board's regulations and policies. Section 2, Financial.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. Could I have a roll call vote? Mr. DeCoste?
Mr. DeCoste, aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Ronbacher?
Aye.
And the Chair is in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we were on to 2C, Human Resources Cemetery Superintendent position. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Andrew Samarko for the Cemetery Commission. So tonight, we're here before you to have the new Cemetery Assistant Superintendent position and its associate grading approved. I believe that Human Resources sent over the draft's job description and functions to you guys previously, but I'm here to answer any questions and hopefully get a vote.
Great. Any questions from the Board?
No.
No. TC, you're good with it, I guess? That'd be the only question. Obviously, you're, everything?
Yeah.
Okay, it's what you wanted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Ronbacher, any questions? Okay.
Personal advisory commission rated it, so I don't know if Bill has any questions or comments in the back.
Mr. Schmidt?
Do you have any questions or comments about this position? Okay, thank you. Mr. DeCoste?
Move the Select Board vote to approve the Assistant Cemetery Superintendent position at grade 8.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. Roll call vote, Mr. DeCoste?
Mr. DeCoste, aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Ronbacher?
Aye.
And the Chair is in favor, so the motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Go back, TC.
All right. And the Finance Department. We're back to the Finance Department. Hi.
Hi again.
Hello.
So I handed you some handouts. The first one is the current finance organization charter's on the first page, yeah, it's right up on the board. Shows how we're currently structured. Thank you for approving on the budget process the Financial Analyst position. I did take that to the Personnel Advisory Committee, and they did grade it at a grade 8, so I'm not sure whether I wasn't on... Are they going to approve that as well?
They're going to approve that tonight, yes. So depending on everything with the rest of this meeting, yes, that could be a motion. It's just not a prepared motion in your packet, so you would make a similar motion that you just did with the Cemetery Commission to approve the Financial Analyst at a grade 8.
So the next page is my draft. Since I've been here a year, I've kind of been able to really fill out the Finance Department. And since the Treasurer Collector is taking another position, I really got to revisit everything and what I really think the Finance Department needs. One thing I found is I wanted to remove the Assistant Director of Finance from the Treasurer Collector position. Most Treasurer Collectors don't have a budgeting background. It's mostly accountants. So I wanted to remove that from the Treasurer Collector. I added a Town Accountant position to assist me with the clothes, to assist me with other tasks, so I can do more higher level instead of being in the details every single day of all, and doing all the reporting by myself. And a Payroll Benefits Analyst position. That's just a transfer. That funding would come straight from HR down into Finance. So they would get the packets from HR. I have Michelle, who's here, who can help present this with me. And they would be the ones keying in all the information, verifying all the information before payroll is done and in board and opened. I don't know if you want to add any Spanish.
Michelle Vibert, Human Resources Director. So as Alicia had explained, it's a Payroll Benefits Analyst. There's a lot that we've collaborated on and reviewed, and over the next year, one of my biggest goals was to figure out in my department kind of what could be better and what can be improved for systems. And we determined that a big portion of that was creating a system of checks and balances for all of our procedures and processes. So the Payroll Benefits Analyst would be more of the financial side of things, whereas the Benefits Coordinator in my office would be left for the HR side of things, because for, I can tell you probably about 90% to 95% of the tasks, there's a lot of overlap between both offices. And right now, one person is handling entering, all the data entry, collecting the data, entering it, taking the process kind of from A to Z, and there really is no checks and balances for that, which is not always good. Things get run through payroll, and you don't always see the mistake until after payroll is run, which can create more work for both departments. So this will kind of help filter that out for that balance between the two departments.
Great.
On that specific piece, I guess, so this is, I attended a few of the meetings, kind of getting an overview of this, but also with the Personnel Advisory Committee. And this is kind of a result like Alicia has kind of alluded to, but you two, Michelle, we kind of, some of the things that employees have brought to you, brought to some of the Board as well, that you guys jumped on it and created, this is definitely going to create an efficiency by moving that payroll benefit piece down next to the, in the Finance Office. So I think this is a huge benefit to the employees of the town, for sure.
Go ahead.
If I may.
Yeah.
So the Payroll Benefits Analyst would be, whether it's Caitlin, or that position would move down to, right now, it's down to Finance, the second floor, to your department. I would, I know that we wrestled with giving Michelle a full-time employee, a 12-hour employee, we've gone back and forth and tried to figure out how to best serve the needs of the HR Department. Can I anticipate that we would need to do some sort of backfilling in the HR Department to make sure that we're still servicing the employees and their needs by probably fulfilling that position that you had requested last year that you didn't get?
Correct. So last year, we did fill that position at 19 hours, which was supposed to be similar to the current Benefits Coordinator slash HR Journalist right now. We are hoping to work with the school and the school committee to hopefully tackle the funding to bring it up to 40 hours.
I believe that's been offered by the schools as well.
So would that be this Payroll Benefits Coordinator position or another position in HR?
So it would be the other position that's left in HR. So right now, this, the current HR slash Journalist, the HR Generalist, excuse me, slash Benefits Coordinator, say that person moves down as a whole body down there in that position, that leaves me with one 19-hour position as it stands today, and then we're hoping to work with this.
To go to full-time with the school committee?
So it would be myself as one FTE, and then hopefully another one FTE.
Got it.
Yeah, Superintendent Clenchey saw the value in what Michelle brings, and it was actually him coming to us, saying that he'd be willing to explore the school, picking the balance up of that position to make it a full-time position, because school's a heavy user of HR, and he appreciates, like I said, that professionalism that Michelle brings to it. So it was Superintendent Clenchey that brought this forward.
Any other comments?
Can I ask you a question? What, who does the retired benefits coordinator get people apart on the payroll? How does that, is that now part of an HR function and are we duplicating effort here? Or is it separated somehow?
No. So that would remain in my office as an HR function.
Okay. Okay. And I just have a request on this, please, this chart that's up there, the names. These position names don't actually match the names in the job description, so if we could update them to be the same at some point, that would be helpful.
Sure, we can double-check all of those.
There's later in the packet, there's something, we're hiring a manager, and I'm not sure which position this is.
So if the thing, the item in your packet is the Financial Analyst, so that is a new position that was approved at your last budget cycle? So is there a different one that didn't match?
No, it's just, that's that position. So they're bringing that position forward, Mark, so we can go out and post it tomorrow.
But, I'm sorry, in the packet, it says Financial Coordinator.
That was a typo.
That was a typo. Where it says Financial Coordinator in the packet, it should say Financial Analyst.
Yeah, that was a typo.
Okay.
Is that cool?
That's what I assumed, but I wanted to bear that in mind.
Great. Any other comments?
I'm good otherwise.
Okay.
Mark, I apologize. I handed out another handout that you probably don't have, which are the top reasons for quitting previous jobs to chart. And it shows at the top, lack of career development and advancement is 41% of why people leave. Inadequate total compensation, 36%. Uncaring, uninspiring leaders, 34%. Lack of meaningful work, 31%. Unsustainable work expectations, 29%. Unreliable and unsupportive work, unsupportive people at work is 26%. And lack of workplace flexibility is 26%. Lack of support for health and well-being is 26%. Non-inclusive and unwelcome in community, which we're not, 14%. And what I've noticed, and I've actually seen it in the National Exercities in Towns, is employees are leaving their municipal jobs for a variety of reasons. Retirements in municipal government have accelerated during the pandemic more than in any other sector. Many retirement-age municipal workers are beginning to transition out of the workforce, and local governments will struggle to fill many mid-to-upper management roles with qualified candidates because of a historical underinvestment in talent pipelines into local government roles. Additionally, other factors identified by municipal employers like non-competitive pay, lack of advancement opportunities, have made it harder for local governments to attract and retain workers. So in this reorg, it shows clear paths in succession planning and advancement roles for different people, which would solve all those issues for the town.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? No, sounds good.
Good job, thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Is there a motion for this?
Move the Select Board vote to approve the Financial Analyst position at a grade 8.
Second.
Motion has been made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy? Yes?
Correct.
Do we need to do something?
Can you roll Financial Analyst?
No, that's fine, but add that the switch from Treasurer Collector slash Assistant Finance Director, so maybe just an approve the Treasurer Collector position at a grade 11, 12? 12. So we can post that as a Treasurer Collector.
Okay.
Would you say?
It's been amended.
Are we okay with that, before I amend it that way? Okay, so sole amended.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just on the Treasurer Collector, I just want to bring to the Board's attention, before it is approved, that the Personnel Advisory Committee did make two changes. One of those was the FLSA status. It was stating not exempt, that should be exempt.
Right.
So that isn't, I don't think, reflected in your packet correctly. And then the other correction that they made was the under-supervision given, it should say has direct supervisory responsibility for full-time treasury collections and payroll employees. It was stated for one full-time and two part-time, so that should not be in there. I just want to bring that to your attention.
And that was a late meeting on Friday at 3 o'clock, so that's why the packet was already out.
Very good.
Thank you.
As amended?
Yes.
It was seconded, all right.
As amended and seconded, so we will now take a vote on the motion as amended. Roll call, Mr. DeCoste?
Mr. DeCoste, aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Ronbacher?
Aye.
And the Chair is in favor as well, so the motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, a lot of work in that.
This is great. And we are now into public input. So anyone who would like to speak, yes, please come to the podium and announce your name and address.
That's Carolyn Mueller, 8 East Roxbury Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Historical Society to just let people know or remind people that this coming Saturday at 1 o'clock, we'll be holding a rededication of the Grange Fountain at the Depot. It's a short ceremony to rededicate the fountain following the restoration work done by David Erickson and his crew. The fountain was given to the town in 1912, and we're going to rededicate the fountain. And it's also a thank you for the private donors and to the Town of Littleton, who voted in October of 2020 town meeting for a community preservation grant to fund part of that restoration. It's going to be hot, so it's going to be a fairly short ceremony. Why we chose July, I don't know, we should have had it sooner. It's going to be a little bit about the history of the area. We'll talk about how the project came about. David Erickson is going to talk about the actual restoration, and Joe Knox will have some short remark as a proponent of the depot. So we'll be meeting, it's against July 30, Saturday at 1:00 PM, and we'll meet at the fountain, which is at 3 Taylor Street in front of, it's now CK Bikes or Johnson Store or Fallon Liquors, depending on when you came to Littleton.
Johnson.
Johnson's, right. So, or, I don't think anyone's been here too long. Just be careful, there's a train coming through at like quarter of 1, so we just ask people to be aware of the crossing, but, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, please.
My name is Sue Clark. I live at 2 Cricket Lane. So I am here to just bring into your awareness, I live on a private way where we've had difficulty with some of the residents parking in the private way. We lost plowing last year because of that, and so we, we brought a lawsuit forth against the people that continuously block the private way because we've had difficulty with emergency vehicles, and we really want to get plowing back for our street. So I have the court order, so I don't know if this is the appropriate place or time to share it with you guys, just for you guys to have a conversation about it.
And is the court order to, what is it ordering?
It's about, it's regarding the private way of Cricket Lane, and it restrains all the residents from parking on.
Okay.
But we're concerned because it links directly to you for plowing and our access to emergency vehicles.
So we can add, I think we can add that to the record?
Yeah.
But we should...
If she gives me that document, I'm happy to look at that and report back to the Board and speak with counsel and let you know what, if any, actually.
Enforcement.
Right, enforcement, so forth.
But thank you for letting us know.
Okay, thank you for listening.
Yeah, so Mr. Unsaldi.
Thank you.
Anyone else have public comments? All right. Members' update. Mr. DeCoste?
Sure. I just, I wanted to basically just give a reach out to all of our employees for all the, you know, the great work that everybody does. And it's kind of interesting that Alicia shared with us the why people leave and all that kind of thing. So I do think that we do, we do our best to try to make sure that employees are getting the proper education and, you know, trying to make sure we put some, some, some things in place so that people can grow within our organization, if you will. But also wanted to talk about the Mutual Aid. When you think Mutual Aid, you often think of police and fire, and certainly this weekend, we all learned that we were involved with Mutual Aid to Westford for the fire department. I know that there's been some search and rescues that our K-9 unit has done as far as helping out to find folks that were lost or had wandered away from different places in the surrounding communities, as well as, we've seen Parking Rec Commission kind of stepping up and helping out with the Orchard, as well as Mr. Mullin sitting with us here. He's certainly done yeoman's work, whether it be with the Orchard or even specifically with his expansion of, you know, trying to help out. He's done more than has been asked of him to make sure that the Land Use Department is taken care of, and he's put in a lot of time and effort and energy to do that. So I just, don't mean to single individuals out, but there's some that have gone way above, but I think that this is a kind of a culture within our organization of kind of pitching in and helping out one another in other surrounding communities as well. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of our employees for that.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
And kind of echoing on that, Anthony, the, held a staff barbecue last week, which was well-attended by pretty much, I think, every department at one time or another came through, so thank you for that. I was lucky enough to swing by, grab a, I won't say what I grabbed, maybe a burger, maybe a hot dog.
No bun.
But thank you for that. And also, the, last week, the Senior Center Department Review had all, really, the stakeholders, all the departments that are going to have a stake in the construction of the Senior Center, come through. So I think that was very helpful to the architect and really, and I know you were a part, a big part of that, too. And some things are going to change on the plans, and so it was actually, it was great to have that event actually take place. And I also just wanted to welcome Ryan, so welcome aboard, we really appreciate you.
Oh, yeah, that too.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Chairman DeCoste, or Select Board Member DeCoste, especially with respect to Mr. Mullin. I know we're going to be discussing the Orchard later this evening, but Mr. Mullin certainly, in my opinion, went above and beyond, helping provide access to the working group, to the Orchard Buildings, meeting with us whenever somebody wanted to go. There was multiple visits to the Orchard Buildings by Select Board members, as well as the working groups. I just wanted to say thank you to him for going above and beyond in that regard. It's very much appreciated. And if anybody has the opportunity, I suggest that you go down to the third floor, the basement floor of the vacated library space, and see Mr. Mullin's handiwork, repurposing some partitions and things that were going to be disposive by the Light and Water Department into cubicles for the Puroning Department. Certainly went above and beyond, saved the town a lot of money, stepping up to do that. So I just wanted to say thank you to him for his hard work in that regard. Select Board Member Wilson and I did meet with Chief Connor and held his review this And we did receive an email from Chief Connor with respect to just ask, requesting an amendment to his contract that we're going to revisit at the meeting on the 8th as well. So that's all.
Thank you.
If I may, Chief Connor's ran into a situation this, this past weekend where he didn't have his town vehicle, he was with his family, the Westford fire happened, and he had to come back to town. So now he had to leave, go pick up his cruiser, and come back into town. So what he's looking for is the same language that's in Chief Pennard's contract, which will allow him to use that vehicle 24/7 for personal use, too, because he does respond. I think with Chief Pennard's contract, if I'm not mistaken, it's, it's obviously restricted to in-state, because even when the Chief, Chief Pennard goes out of state, then it's a different story. He can't respond, so he takes his personal vehicle. So I think Chief Connor's looking for that, and I'm happy to work on that and bring that back to the board, that contract amendment.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I guess the only question is, so I know with some of the other departments, we run into tax implications for the individuals.
They're exempt.
They are, so.
Or it's exempt.
Okay.
Mr. Ronbacher?
So I wanted to thank the Rotary and all the participants for throwing a wonderful Appleman event a couple Saturdays, Sundays ago. It was well-attended and was an awesome fundraiser for the Rotary, and thank them for all they do for the town. And this past Saturday, I attended the MMA News Select Board event out in Depples, which was very enlightening, so I'll report back more on that to people later.
Good. And I just wanted to also mention the barbecue, it was, it was great, and that was a really, a really excellent event. So I think we should do it every week if possible, because I could use lunch on Fridays. But thank you, Anthony, for that.
I hate when they're from Cook.
It was a.
No complaints from my cooking, Mark.
It was, it was nice seeing everyone there. That was very well-attended.
Everybody was really happy, and it was really an opportunity, even with the school department, to bring everybody together. Everybody was pleased, and it's really good morale and a team-building exercise, so it were no of our, even better than we expected. And thank you for those that could attend, we appreciate that. Just wish you brought cooler weather, but thank you.
Do my best. All right, we are on to joint meeting with the Board of Health, who I think some members are here.
You do have a call.
You do have a call, great. Do you want to call your meeting to order?
Right.
Yeah?
This thing is pandemic.
Do you want to begin, Kevin?
Sure. So at 7:00, I like to open a joint town meeting with the Board of Health and the Select Board of Public Health nurses. You have the slide deck, don't you?
I do.
So we have a work, working document that's been put together regarding guidance for addressing public health crises, whether it be COVID or another one moving forward. It's not defined, it's a working document. We learned a lot these past few years, and we wanted to sit down and talk with you folks so we can continue to work together to make the best decisions possible for the town of Littleton and its residents and keep it healthy. So as you'll see, just working through the document, Anthony, the next, next slide, please. It's, it's pretty simple. There are four levels of concern, five levels of concern. Operating normally, monitoring the situation, minor impact, moderate impact, and major impact. So currently, we're monitoring the situation. Anthony, if you skip to the next slide, you know, operations are normal, there's no foreseeable public health crisis, we meet on normal frequency, and we focus on preparedness planning, managing stockpiles. We just received 3,800 Appleman COVID tests, which we'll be discussing distribution on Wednesday. We'd love your input to see which folks in town might need those, which county departments should focus on, COA, different folks in town might be, so happy to open up the discussion for that as well. Next slide, please. Minor impact.
Oh, did you, did you want?
Sorry, monitor, moderate. Current foreseeable public health crisis exists, and we meet on normal frequency, we have a standing agenda item to review the public health data, we go over our ID decision support tool, which takes into account level of COVID and wastewater, hospitalization rates, hospital capacity issues that may be presented, and other data that's available. When there's a minor impact, we'll continue that standing agenda item and potentially issue advisories. Next, please. A moderate impact is when we'd sort of like to have, have the select board's input and come and meet with you folks to figure out next best courses of action, things we can do to keep our elderly population safe and healthy, things we can do to keep businesses open and schools open and keep life as normal as possible. And then it just sort of moves on. You know, we may call an emergency meeting specifically to impose an order or regulation. We'll meet with the Select Board on a routine basis and restrictions potentially imposed on businesses or private spaces. Hopefully, we don't, we don't get back to where we were, we're on the upswing, but these are, these are crisis situations that may be having a deal with COVID or something else down the road, so we want to put this document together. And that's, that's basically it. Items to consider, how to determine our crisis level at a given moment, we're using an ID decision support tool that's sort of been a working document. We can forward that over to you folks. It has to do with wastewater treatment levels, cases in the schools, which are actually our crystal ball, like our leading indicator, because the nurses and the staff and Dr. Clutchy do such a great job monitoring the activity at the schools and who's out, when, how many students are out, the contact tracing. So, you know, if we could get your blessing to continue to keep that data flowing on the dashboard as it's been the past couple of years, that'd be great, because it's a, it's a very important decision-making tool that we have, and probably the most important that our town has to make relevant decisions. So that's all I have on the, on the guidance for addressing public health crisis. Like I said, it's a working document. We love your input. Any questions, concerns, comments?
What is, why do you need our blessing to keep the school data coming to the dashboard?
Oh, I just feel like we can make a bigger difference and do a better job when we all work together and not have opposing views or differences in opinion on whether the data should be collected and potentially distributed to the Board of Health and the Select Board to make decisions.
Go ahead. Good comments.
I think we're recipients of that data. I don't think that's necessarily the orders of where it's disseminated.
Yeah, that, I guess, yeah, I was gonna, sort of aiming at that same thing. Do we want to define someplace to display it or?
Well, the schools, the schools have the dashboard.
Okay.
I guess the, you know, I guess the point of that comment I made was to just make sure the data keeps being updated and keeps being distributed.
Yeah.
You know, we alone, you know, may not have the time or resources to fight that fight should that availability go away.
I see.
So is that more like a resource question, make sure that we still allow the health agent to work with you to get that information out?
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Anyone else have questions?
No.
I have a couple.
Yeah.
On, on the, on the moderate impact, where it's, the slide, it says, were restrictions imposed on municipal buildings and urban public spaces, is that a requirement or is it a may or potentially? And then, because under major impact, it says, you may impose restrictions on businesses in private spaces.
Yeah, that's a may. There's nothing definite here. It all depends on, on the weather and what is happening with the virus or any virus, really.
And what kind of restrictions could you impose on private spaces?
I suppose there could be, you know, mandates, capacity restrictions. You know, I think before mandates come into play, it's, it makes more sense to have a conversation with said private business owner and sort of see where they stand and see how we can work together to make sure that environment's a safe place for people to congregate.
Other questions, Mark?
Nope.
Can I just ask my fellow board members?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yes.
Jim Fraroni, 26 hours, I've been at Board of Health for many, many years, and we were doing fine with Jim, with Jim. And I spoke to the commandant and the general, the general I talked to, my friend, and he was kind enough to give me the input, the question, my question would be, I know we need an individual to take care of the Board of Health, an agent, but we have a part-time agent, Jim. If we can find somebody like that, it'd be beautiful. The question is, all of us, we have some opinion. The question is, how good would be a new agent? And another thing is, is the town able to afford a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, because you have an agent and you have an assistant agent? But we have a nice general over there, and he takes care of us, and we have Jim, he comes part-time. The question is, if you talk to the, the finance committee and they say, we don't have a couple hundred thousand, then what you have to do, you have to raise taxes. So we're trying to avoid that. I know that town is expanding, we have the surge, we have library, senior center coming up, we still pay for the school, and I was on a board in all those things. So I know how everything works. We don't want to raise any more penny to anybody at the moment, especially now when you go out in the car, it costs you five bucks a gallon. So the idea to have one, I understand it was very specific, it'd be nice to have one. But I want to make sure that Jim Garafi, when we have somebody, he's going to interview him, not you guys and not us. I want to make sure that we get somebody comparable with Jim Garafi.
We'll go through that, you know, when we talk about that.
One second.
That's a different agenda item, Jim.
Yeah, that's the next, the next.
What I'm saying is, we have to make sure that everything goes smooth. Check with the finance committee, and they will tell us that we can afford something like that, a couple hundred thousand, okay?
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure you got it here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry that I bothered everybody.
Dan Kane, do you have any comments regarding the guidance for addressing public health crisis?
Sure. Dan Kane, Board of Health. So the tool, really, it's trying to balance the, a little bit of the art and science of clinical care across all the potential public health concerns or crises that go on. COVID was our, our big red flag. We haven't had anything like that since, really, since 1908. So we're trying to figure out how we can quantify as best we can, provide information as clearly as we can to the public, so that those lines of may impose, may consider, are just that may, because depending on what situation it is, it's going to vary of either what level we're at and what the best intervention may be. So just, but just trying to share as much information as possible, that's kind of our goal, and having it be publicly facing the best we can, having it on the town website and Board of Health page, having it out there, kind of, those of us who are slightly older remember that, you know, 1 through 5, emergency level thing, what color are we at right now? Whether that's DEFCON, whether that's terrorism in this case is, what are we doing with public health right now? What's our situation? Is it air pollution? Is it heat? We're in the middle of it right now. Also, something really, a public health crisis is just very, very short-term. We have cooling stations open, we have water available. We are taking interventions at the community to address them. It's the exact same thing, recognizing how we can best provide commitment to the public and recognize how many resources we even need to respond to, whatever that crisis is. The folks understand where we are.
Thank you. So one thing that, that seemed to be problematic over the last year was, I think there was some confusion sometimes about who was responsible or who had the ultimate call, and the mask mandate was a great example of that. There was a lot of back and forth and hemming and hawing between, I think, the Board of Health and the Select Board about who was going to take the plunge and actually suggest a mask mandate. So I'm not sure that I have a, a specific question or a solution to that problem, apart from saying that that is something that probably could be clarified and probably should be at least thought about as we, as we work on like a document to, to share information and responsibilities. The other one is perhaps defining a process for public notices, because I do think there was also a, some, some back and forth on whether things were going on the website and whether there was data available on the website. And when you mentioned the school information in their dashboard, it sure would be great to have it all in one place. And so again, I'm not sure, I don't know if we can formalize that, but it would be nice to have a, some kind of framework in place to collect that data and display it.
We are, and talked with Nancy about a lot of different.
Okay.
Issues. So hopefully in the next week or so, we can make a plan, hash it out, get an outline together, and figure out next steps to make that possible.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, I'm not, I don't think redundancy is necessarily a bad thing, as long as it's all the same information.
Agreed. No, no, that's right.
Yeah, I'd love it if it fed, you know, from, from the schools and to the Board of Health, gets distributed, as long as, you know, taking into consideration the state data on a bigger level, I think it would be, it would be well worth it to have all that in one place. In regards to, you know, mandates and how all that gets done, there's a process where we can work together. If all minds are alike, it's an issue of order, which is a much smoother, less complicated, less timely alternative than issuing a regulation, which is what we did last time. So that's sort of why we wanted to come and sit down and be at the table and, and have you guys be a part of the process, so we don't get to the part, to the point to where we have to take this big step of putting together a regulation, getting the lawyers involved. You know, sitting down, making some decisions and issuing an order would be lighter lifting vertically, and probably more acceptable.
I think when we're, anytime we're going to be dealing, in this specific case, dealing with human liberties, you're never, you're probably always going to have a board to split to some degree, so that, it is nice when we can have that, a decision, like you said, because it does, it does create unity, but on such a once-in-a-lifetime, if you will, generational event, how do you, you know, just got, getting our arms around it? I was just curious, so some of that information was, lessons learned, it's definitely, you spoke to that, but is it lessons learned also? Did you get this from other communities using kind of the same type of levels? Did you see any other, I mean, obviously, all communities are dealing with this, creating this, and some probably are maybe a little ahead of us, and many are way behind us in trying to deal with this, but.
I haven't seen anything that's public-facing.
Nothing.
That's out there. Sure, that communities like Cambridge or Worcester or Boston are doing something like that.
Yeah.
Just because they have such a large population.
Yeah.
But it'd be great to get, get to a spot to where we have it public-facing, distributed with a click and a robocall, and, you know, we've done our job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this item?
Dan, did you have something else?
I was going to kind of break back a little bit to that communication piece. Certainly, when the order first went in for mask mandates a year and a half ago, there was some discussion back and forth, but the best way to notify the public of the order going to a good place. And there was conversations around reverse 911 and website placement and notices, and there was a perceived delay, perhaps, to some of those pieces. I don't believe robocalls ever went out. So I certainly, it was wonderful to see for our drought notification and water restrictions, that within about 15 minutes, I had the email, it was on the website, and I had a robocall. So I would love to see, again, beyond the Board of Health's skill, but certainly from the Administrator's Office and the Select Board, of having a, an algorithm, a guideline of at what point do we trigger what levels of communication, so that we're consistent across all the boards, whether it's spraying at the schools for their fields, which, again, we get robocalls a couple times a year, having pretty much a kind of standard communication tool, so there's not a, hey, it's in fact, it's in place, we really need to make sure the community is aware of it, where other things seem to be very rapidly shared multiple groups. So that's something certainly from the Select Board and from the office, the Administrator's Office, that perhaps we can come up with a, a cleaner set of guidelines of what things trigger what level of response communications from the town level, beyond the scope of any word, short of yours.
So perhaps from you, we could get some, some suggested guidelines if we're at a level four and we do, you know, a notification, it needs to have the same distribution that, you know, we do for a drought warning or, you know?
Right. Like I said, this is a working document, so maybe we'll just add a couple more rows and, you know, call out different.
Office, that perhaps we can come up with a, a cleaner set of guidelines of, of what things trigger what level of response communications from the Town Level, beyond the scope of any word, short of yours.
So perhaps from you, we could get some, some suggested guidelines if we're at a level four, and we do, you know, a notification, it needs to have the same distribution that, you know, we do for a drought warning, or, you know?
Right. Like I said, this is a working document, so maybe we'll just add a couple more rows, and, you know, call out different strategies that we can use to notify public, you know, as the situation gets, changes.
Okay. Mr. Ronbacher, you have anything? Okay. Great. Thank you. Onwards to the MOU, M O A?
Yep. I've read it.
You read it?
I signed it.
Okay. Good.
What do you want to add?
Do you want anything, any comments? You want to queue, queue anything up, or?
What are your, what are your thoughts?
I don't have any, I mean, I, I read through it again.
We're very happy that the grade is 11. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We realize you're working with a rubric that may be a little bit different than what we might expect, but we did the best we could, and hopefully we find a suitable candidate.
Hopefully.
Yep.
Does the Board have comments on the memorandum?
Appreciate all the time and effort that went into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess a little bit of confusion, you know, I always see when you're dealing with a board that's exercising supervisory control over a position, and then you're, it looks like you're giving the supervisory duties to you, correct? To manage the?
Of course, designated.
Yes, but.
Okay. It just seemed a little confusing how that was going to, you want to make sure that that employee knows exactly who they're reporting to, and who, and, you know, who's responsible for that. So there's a, I think.
Well, that's the tricky part, because this position is, you know, fully encompassing of, you know, a health department.
Yeah.
One of the very important responsibilities this person has is Title V, which they will need to communicate with Commissioner Mullin daily, if not hourly.
And that position isn't even written into the M O A at all.
Right. So I think what we should do is make mention of a day-to-day in regard, supervision in regards to Title V and septic systems, however, leaving sort of the, I don't know if you want to call it bigger picture, or different public health concerns, whether it be trash haulers, or swimming pools, or, you know, whatever that case may be, leaving that up to Town Administrator, or, what are your thoughts?
Yeah. It was one of my concerns in reviewing this, I got it late last week, is that Kevin and I have talked a lot through this, but I, I think the M O A came up short as far as defining that, the designee. Because it's not something that, you know, that, that's why we were going to put it under, you know, I was going to designate that under the Land Use Department, because of that interaction with Title V and a number of other inspections that go along with that. So that really wasn't defined in there, so, you know, I'd like to make, recommend to the Board, if, if we were able to maybe table this, just to work through a couple of those changes.
I mean, I think in Section 4, if we could just make point A, just say, we'll designate the Town Administrator, Administrator and/or Building Commissioner to day-to-day, to supervise the day-to-day.
So, but, but that paragraph makes me think that it's limited to time and attendance, leave, work, location, and performance, and not any of the, like, work product things about Title V or public health.
Well, they're going to be all certified, they're going to know, they're not going to give guidance on that.
No, I understand, but I'm saying like, this, this memorandum, as it's written, gives Anthony or his designee the.
Well, it doesn't say, that's, that's my problem. It doesn't, the designee portion is missing out of this, this draft.
Oh, I see. Okay, but it, whoever, whether it's you or your designee, it gives you the supervision on those basically like attendance, but not on work product. And it sounds like there's several different places where this person is going to need, I don't know whether it's supervision, but the Title V is one thing, public health is another.
Certainly coordination between departments, and, and that, that would definitely be helpful. Other than that, I was concerned that this was creating a little bit of a silo by not having that language in there. So, you know, that's my concern with that, with the, as it's currently standing.
If I can add something?
Go ahead, Mark.
Go ahead, Mark.
So I had a couple of concerns with this as well. Like, I know that we have other M O As with other departments, like the Painting Board, potentially Parking Rec, and I'd like to, and maybe down the road like the Library and others, and I'd like to see one boilerplate that more or less covers some of these. There's, and I'm not sure what those others look like, to know that we're in the same boat, right? That we're, that we're half the same basically, basic format. So I, I would like to table this to the next meeting, so that we can, so that I can review the other ones, because I haven't seen them yet, right? There must be one for Maury currently, I assume there's one for Alicia Day, and I'd like to know what those look like, to see that we're on the same page, right? And there's a, just a, also, there's just a couple other things that I think we're missing in this, like, it says it's a two-year term, but it doesn't say what happens if no one does anything after two years. So it sounds like it just expires, right? And it probably should be written so that it renews automatically unless someone cancels it. And I think a 14-day notice for canceling this is really short for something that's going to be worked out this hard. So it should be more like 90 days or something, and potentially have cause or something else in there, too, so. I, I think it's a reasonable draft, but I'd like to think another pass at certain of these issues, to see if we can.
Give you time.
Make sure that all of them are more or less on the same page and we're coming forward more unified and outside.
At the end of the day, it's to see a signature.
That's very sensible.
Give us the chair, if you'd like, maybe Mark or another member of the Board would like to, you know, work with me and Kevin, and kind of work through some of these changes, and maybe put together a new M O A for the next meeting that would adjust, would address everybody's concerns.
That, that's a great idea. Let's do that.
Is Mark okay? Is anyone else?
Mark, are you okay with, with looking at that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'll be cutting off a minute over the roof.
Okay.
I mean, the most important part of this is that we set this person up for success. We want to make sure that they have everything they need to do a great job, and, you know, I'd be, I'd be completely happy with, with all the supervision.
Yeah, and we, we do have time, you know, we did post the position, you know, unfortunately, we didn't get a lot, we didn't, I think we got one, maybe two. While they're great, we'd like to look at reposting it and expanding our search to hopefully drop more, more qualified applicants for this very important position. So we do have time. It's not like this person's, we're ready to interview somebody. We're not. We, we just had to start the clock now, another 30 days and repost, which Michelle's going to be reposting all these jobs tomorrow.
Chuck, you have something?
Yeah, the only comment I had is that I definitely appreciate the comments Mark made relative to Paragraph 5, the miscellaneous comments, and I do, do think those do need to be addressed. But I think Kevin's suggestion relative to Paragraph 4A, the Select Board will designate the Town Administrator and/or.
Yeah.
Or, or designate. I think it's fine there, and it's just to, to touch on some of the comments you made, I think the word "performance" at the end of that, after time and vacation and, you know, all that kind of stuff, I think the word "performance" basically ties us back to the, the job description.
Oh, I thought that was like a perform, like a review, performance review, but I, I understand.
We can get more specific.
Yeah, it's a bit, it's a bit.
But going back to what Mark said.
Quality of work.
Yeah, something like that.
But, you know, with Mark saying, if we look back to some of the other agreements that we do have in place, we can make sure that the language is somewhat boilerplate, and I think it's going to be uniform.
Okay. Yeah, so, sounds like we have a plan.
Happy to coordinate a meeting. Kevin, you and Mark, and.
So you can bring in Dan.
Sure. We'll sit in the conference room and hash out this.
Mark, resume.
Eddie, anything else from the Board of Health?
Gina, do you have any comments?
Mr. Mullin?
My, my comment is that what you said and what they hear is good. The question is, we are not qualified to have an agent that he doesn't, he only knows a little bit. We want to make sure that that gentleman over there near you, he's going to interview him. Our interviewer, I've been in business for 35 years in construction, and we did a lot of that kind of a surgeon treatment and sub-tem system, okay? I want to make sure everything is done right.
Okay.
Okay, because if we have to pay, and then the, because now we're in, now only in the pandemic, but people want more money, and all of a sudden, they say, "I'll take the job, but you're going to give me $150,000." The other guy was $125,000, and the town doesn't, it can't afford it. So what are we going to do? We have policemen, the fire department, many of the.
Okay, Gina, thank you. We, I got you. Thank you very much. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, I was going to speak to what Gina was saying. On one, the position is budgeted already at a grade 11, and if we can get permission from the Board of Health to clone Jim Garafi, then we all settle.
Right. Okay. I think they can do that in South Korea now. Okay, thank you. Do you want, do you want to adjourn your meeting?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'll just draw that second.
All right. Roll call vote. Gina Ferron?
Yes. Gina Ferron, yes.
Dan Kane, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was coming, and he's going to put me aside.
Thank you, Board of Health, very much. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I recommend to the Board that we take, we have Mr. Dembrow here, that he, his is a real minor change, so if we can just move him up in the agenda?
That would be fine. So that would be.
Totally okay with.
It's my CTV.
Are you enjoying yourself?
It could be an hour before, yeah.
And in my opinion, just so that you can have, for the Health Department and everybody else, the thing is, is, you know, most of the restaurateurs in these towns already know what needs to be done, they know how it needs to be done, the way it needs to be done, and some of them have great ideas, and they're the ones that are in the field. I think that the best thing that this Board could do would be to get those restaurateurs together and sit there and say, "Hey, what do we need to do to solve?" A lot of the biggest things that go on that don't get really addressed is how cross-contamination really happens and the way it happens. Solving some of those problems will eliminate the closing down of restaurants by, just by putting procedures inside the restaurants that the restaurants can easily handle being a sanitation station right in the dining room before anything even makes it towards the kitchen to be cleaned. You know, those little things that I did with my restaurant in Hudson, it placated everything that I've done since. And I am moving into, into Littleton, and we are moving forward with that food program, so I do want to spend some time talking with you gentlemen, and I think it'd be a great idea.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. So.
6B.
6B?
So back on April 25th, the Select Board approved a one-day liquor license for Mr. Dembrow for August 13th, and it was a function, I believe, a wedding, that was, he asked for 5 to 10. That time is changed, the request to 3 to 8. So we needed to come back to the Select Board to just have that vote to switch the time from 5 to 10 to 3 to 8, and issue new one-day liquor license that the Board would need to sign.
Any comments from the Board on this one?
No.
Mr. Ronbacher?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'd recommend that we change it to 3 to 10, and then if it shifts.
You can only do it for five hours. Yeah, that's the max.
Okay.
I have five hours until I fill them.
Okay.
Is that state?
Yeah. It is. Yeah, it's A, B, C, C.
All right, ready for a motion?
Move the Select Board vote to amend the application submitted by Stevie's Eatery LLC, owner-operator Steven Dembrow, for a special one-day wine and malt-only pouring license initially approved by the Select Board at their April 25th meeting, for an event scheduled for August 13th, 2022, to revise the designated hours of alcohol sales from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, down to 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, under national law, Chapter 138, Section 14, to be held at Stevie's Backroad Cafe and Catering, located at One Monarch Drive, Littleton, Mass.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy. Roll call vote. Mr. DuCoste?
Mr. Coste.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Ronbacher?
Aye.
And the Board, the Chair is in favor, the motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, ladies.
Steve, we have two copies here, one for us and one for you, so if you, the Board's going to sign it right now, so you can take that with you.
Okay.
But Mark can't, Mark can't.
I can pick it up tomorrow. I can have some of that, Mark.
Mark can't sign it.
Um. It's not going to be able to sign it.
This way you guys can continue on what you're doing.
Well, it's already signed.
Seconds, it's all signed, just grab it now.
All details.
Great. Thank you. Have a nice wedding.
Not mine. I promise I'll never do that again.
There's a story there, I know. All right, we're on to Shaker Lane Truck Exclusion Presentation. And, yes, sir.
Mr. Delanzo?
Please, approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
Sure. I'm going to have to keep this on now. Michael Delanzo, 12 Shaker Lane. And this is the presentation up on the board.
One second, I'm going to pull it up.
I, I created a little video with me walking through, the, the goal was to do 10 slides, 10 minutes. I got it to 11 slides, 11 minutes. And I think it'll go faster, and you won't have to listen through my mask if we just play the video.
Do you? I watched it today.
I, I actually, I watched it as well.
I remember, I already watched it?
Yeah.
That's good.
Mark, did you watch the video? Oh, you're muted.
I didn't watch the video, I read the slides.
Okay.
And then we could do questions after.
We, we don't have the video, so.
Oh, you don't have the video?
Yeah, so we had the, we had the slide, you said.
Yeah, I didn't bring my notes.
That's okay. We, I believe, I mean, that.
You hooked up to the web? It's, it's on, it's on my cloud.
Yeah.
Do you write in our emails?
Yeah.
I just got.
So what I, what I, while, while he's getting it up, what I tried to do was put everyone's, of all, you know, a lot of people emailed the Board, tried to get all their stuff together and organize it a little bit, and just kind of present why we, we really want this to happen, and why Shaker Lane is, is sort of unique compared to other roads in Littleton. I mean, I could just, I could see, you know, other, other people in Littleton going, "Well, why Shaker Lane?" You know, we, we all want that. And I've tried to distinguish us between the other roads and talk about all the issues that might come up in going, going through this.
I almost have it.
Thank you, guys, for.
Yep.
Putting us on the agenda. Appreciate it. Most of the people in Shaker Lane are on vacation right now, not even in the country. A couple houses are not even in the country.
I'm not sure how I was your neighbor, I'd want you telling everybody that I lost.
I won't give you the numbers.
Chief, you ring a patrol.
It's most.
No, just, well, most are on vacation. Yeah, so you guys better patrol actually.
More than half of the residents of Shaker Lane sent emails to the Select Board since last November in support of removing or at least restricting large commercial vehicles from Shaker Lane. We certainly understand that everyone in Littleton would like to have trucks around their streets, but we feel Shaker Lane more than qualifies for this restriction.
That slide is actually headed in...
The physical characteristics of the road and its location are what make Shaker Lane unique. Both have a large impact on the safety of the road, and safety was the major concern or is the major concern of the residents who wrote to the board. In the following slides, we'll discuss mostly the safety issues posed by location and road characteristics, but we'll also highlight the preservation issues with Shaker Lane being a designated school road, and then why this is happening now, followed by a quick summary and some final notes. These photos were taken by residents that lived nearby the Shaker Lane School during a school event. As you can see from the photo, Shaker Lane is very narrow with no shoulders or sidewalks. Additionally, it is a winding road with a 70-foot elevation drop from one end to the other. It has poor sightlines and a blind entry onto Goldsmith Street. You can also see that the telephone pole in the right-hand side of the first photo is just maybe a foot and a half from the street. Everyone on this side of Littleton, as well as people I know in Acton and Foxborough and Westford, all know Shaker Lane is a cut-through to get between Goldsmith and State Road 119 to A. Goldsmith is also, according to Paul Glavy, meets mass standards for a theater route, two roads that are made to handle trucks. Of course, GPS apps like Waze and Google Maps have made this problem even worse. For people who didn't know beforehand that it was a cut-through, it is now, and you can see from the picture below, this is typical of what Shaker Lane looks like when 495 North is congested. Many of these apps, there's more than a half a dozen of them now, they won't remove your street from their shortcut list or their alternate route list unless there's some type of restriction on the road itself. Another issue with the location of Shaker Lane is its close proximity to four large earth materials companies on Powers Road and Westford. Agil concrete block, the Shoba paving, Weed Custom Soils, Westford Earth Materials, all have very large trucks that carry heavy materials like granite, soil crushed stone. They all use Shaker Lane as a shortcut. In addition, other companies that do business with these four companies all use Shaker Lane as a shortcut. These trucks from the Powers Road companies don't always travel alone, they need to trailer their equipment that they use at the job site, and when these trailers hit a bump on Shaker Lane and they get airborne for a few inches, when they hit the ground, the shockwaves that go through the neighborhood are pretty impressive. So another downside to being a shortcut from the four companies on Powers Road is the delivery of hazardous materials. Last March, I was coming from Westford down Powers Road, this tanker truck pulled out in front of the car in front of me, and it came all the way up to Route 119 where it made a right, and then left onto Shaker, and I of course followed it to the end of Shaker Lane where it made a left onto Goldsmith to go, I presume, to Route 2 back to Chelsea, and then the company on the back of the truck said Chelsea. It also had a Class 3 flammable hazardous material placard on it. Question is, is it really necessary for trucks like this to use Shaker Lane? The last item for discussion with respect to location is the Shaker Lane School. Last, but certainly not the least, one of the, one of the most frequent comments I got when talking to people both on and off of Shaker Lane was, I can't believe they let those trucks go down that street with that school there. As you can see, the proximity of Shaker Lane to the school's playground is less than 20 feet. Is it okay to have those trucks roaring by just a little more than a free throw away? I mean, in addition to the danger, there's the diesel exhaust and the loud noises. That's, those can't be good for small children. And these are, this is pre-grade through second grade, these are little kids, 400 little kids. Massachusetts has a law on designated scenic roads, Title 5, Chapter 40, Section 15C. From that law, and voted in General Law, Chapter 143, these are documented well in the supplemental packet, so I won't go into them here, except to highlight these two items from Littleton, Chapter 143. Quote, preserve the narrow character and physical appearance, end of quote. And then take into consideration aesthetic considerations and preservation of environmental resources as well as public safety. The earlier parts of the presentation covered much of the safety aspects or safety issues on Shaker Lane, but I did want to mention that many of the emails to the Select Board discussed various traffic accidents that people witnessed. Of course, we only know what we witnessed or heard about, so we do not know if Shaker Lane has more accidents than other roads in Littleton. On the aesthetic side, Shaker Lane is well-known for its stone walls. Many of us were drawn to Shaker Lane by its quintessential name of stone walls. For details, I'll defer to the email sent to the board by Ann Himmelberger. Ann's father, Fred Herpy, who once owned most of the great roadside of Shaker Lane, put in significant effort in preserving these stone walls, many of which continue to loosen and lose stones due to the heavy truck vibrations. So why now? Well, the safety issue's gotten a lot worse. The truck sizes and weights are bigger than ever, and this trend's going to continue. I mean, it's continuing even with pickup trucks. You'll see the supplemental information, I've got consumer reports and a Bloomberg and Oak Ridge Lab study about how even pickup truck sizes have, in the last like five or six years, have gone up like 1,300 pounds. I mean, that's ridiculous. Even pickup trucks are now 1,200 tons. Also, there's a lot more volume of trucks using Shaker Lane, and then of course, we talked about the GPS apps. But of course, this is not a new issue. Residents have been talking about this since, before I became a resident, and many of the homeowners are frustrated. When I, when I talked to them, they felt like every time they mentioned it, either if it's to various groups or whoever, that they don't get, they don't get any response to the tolls or the fares. And, you know, these, some of these safety issues come up with each generation of new Shaker Lane home, and for instance, the issues about not having sidewalks, that came up in the 1990s, and here it was back again in 2016. So we talked about how location and topography affects Shaker Lane from being a suitable road for large commercial traffic, how it's unique in that it's a designated scenic road, and it has an elementary school, the Shaker Lane School. Also that there's a lot of support for this effort among residents, but we didn't talk about alternate routes. Now, we haven't talked about that because that's really part of the result of the engineering study. That said, the conditions that are outlined as a suitable alternate route in the Mass Stop Regulation, Section 10A-9, doesn't really address the impact of shifting heavy vehicle traffic, heavy vehicle traffic to another road. And while it doesn't talk about that, it certainly doesn't need to be considered as a, for a holistic solution, the board certainly does need to consider the impact that making Shaker Lane a truck, a no-truck street affect how it affects the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's not just in Littleton, that includes Acton and Westford also. But we shouldn't, I don't think we should block Shaker Lane from receiving a large truck exclusion simply because the burden shifts to another road. That just means that the solution to the problem needs to be more thorough and more thought out, as Tom Slonker pointed out in his email to the board when he referenced the Shoba Road. Also, if we actually get to the point where we need to approach Mass Highway District 3, State Rep Jim Arcerio's office said that they'll certainly help at the state level, this is a quote from the email, his email is also part of the supplemental packet that I submitted. And then, and then finally, in the end, safety needs to be paramount.
So that video was, those videos were taken from the office window in my house.
Thank you.
Hopefully not all at once.
No, it was pretty easy though, you could hear them coming, so I just picked up my phone, walked to the window, recorded.
Thank you.
Thanks. Does anyone have any questions?
I would like to hear, actually, from Chief Bernard, if you have any, if there's any information that you have on either the tendency of accidents on Shaker Lane, or if you have any information about traffic patterns and how many trucks there are on Shaker Lane relative to other streets.
Absolutely. So, I saw this on the agenda, I was asked to participate tonight, so I figured, you know something, to pull up the accident reports that we have on file for the last four years. So what I did was I went through, and we had anything that had Shaker Lane was inside it. So Shaker Lane at Newtown, Shaker Lane at King, I mean, Shaker Lane at Gray, Shaker Lane at Goldsmith, anything that had Shaker Lane on it. In the last four years, there's been 10 accidents there, and not a single one has had a truck involved in it. That being said, could there be a truck accident someday? Absolutely. We can't predict the future, but I can only wait with the stats that was asked to gather.
Do you, do you have any sense whether that's better or worse than most, than other residential roads in Littleton?
I thought about, we can actually do a comparison, if you'd like to table this again, I can compare it to different towns, different roads we have in town. The only thing that I'll caution the board on from my point of view is, will be the ones that will have to enforce the truck exclusion. We have a tough enough time right now enforcing the truck exclusion that it's on Taylor Street and again on Bruce Street, those are two of the truck exclusion roads. And the big thing that I want to caution them on is, is I understand what you're saying and how you want a scenic road and whatnot, but you're going to have the next pushback of, you know, new estate wants a truck exclusion because it's a cut-through during school traffic, then you're going to have Hartwell Ave, then you're going to have Russell Street, then you're going to have Speck Pond Road. There's a litany of streets that I can just keep going off of.
Yeah.
But how many of those, how many of those streets have an elementary school on them?
What, Russell Street?
Russell Street, Russell Street just got, also just got sidewalks at February.
I'm on side two.
Okay.
Maybe we should look at sidewalks as well.
Yeah.
Steve loves to hear me say that, because I watch sidewalks around town. So...
And sidewalks, chief, was something that I worked on with Chris Stoddard, Steve's predecessor at the time, we were working towards the safe routes to school, and we were doing everything that we needed to so we can apply for that big grant, and then the pandemic hit, and then they pulled the funding on that project or at least put it on hold. So, we were working towards that and with sidewalks, but it'd be, it would be a pretty significant dollar amount, that's what we're hoping for.
And Mr. Delanzo, I also want to inform you that, and I'm sure you're aware of this already, but the board has already passed the 25 mile per hour sign throughout the con, for the town. That's going to go into effect probably within...
Is this really a week and a month?
Yeah, probably within a couple of weeks.
Okay, I didn't know that.
So that's going to make that Shaker Lane 25 mile per hour zone, which is going to be...
That's helpful. Well, that's people's van. I mean, there are times when it's all...
Well, I mean, you know, no different from any other, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's just there are times when 35 seems like, I mean, Glavy almost killed me the other day, I was just getting my mail, you know, so...
Is that Glavy almost killed you?
A lady.
Oh, lady, okay. I do want to hear from the rest of the board as well on this one. Mr. DuCoste?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
I echo what the chief said. I mean, this has been something that has been in front of us for a long time, there's been some, some conversations with Mr. Stoddard, with Mr. Yonley, with the chief, I spoke with other communities and to see what they've done relative to truck exclusions, and I've done a fair amount of research on the uniform traffic control devices and standard municipal traffic codes, and it's pretty specific and it's, it's, it's all driven by data. If we can prove a number of criteria, then we can apply to the state and see if we can, we can make a change and do an exclusion. Based upon my own unscientific research and going out in, as recently as this afternoon, I went out there and spent a little over an hour parked in the Shaker Lane driveway over the course of 70 minutes... Pardon me? Did I get a call, a phone call, there was a, there was a stop? I did wait, I did wait, I got, I can tell you the address.
Was it a white van?
Did it say candy on the side? Sorry, please continue.
Yeah, so just, just, again, completely unscientific, but during the 70 or so minutes that I was out there, there were 92 vehicles that came down the street. One vehicle was an oversized vehicle, it was a Poland Spring delivery vehicle that went to Norfolk Ave, Norfolk Drive, right at the end of the intersection, just outside of the driveway from Shaker Lane School. I did it in five-minute increments, on average, there was probably about eight vehicles for every five minutes, just roughly speaking. If we can prove that there are 5% to 8% oversized vehicles or what would be defined as greater than 2.5 tons, I believe, Mr. Yonley, which, there's a lot of vehicles that are over 2.5 tons, but there's, one of the, there was, there was a couple of pickup dump trucks that came by, one of them I know happens to be a resident of Newtown, so it was coming, coming home probably. And I think that in order for us to do anything, there's a lot of data that we'd have to collect. I appreciate all the time and effort and energy you put into this, I know that in the time that I've been on the board, since November, we have received, I don't know that we've received more than half of the residents, because I think there's about 34 residences...
About 28, I think.
Based upon the tax rules, I could talk to Ms. Adama.
They're paying taxes, but they're not living there.
Well, okay, so, but nonetheless, I mean, it's, there's, to chief's point, there's a, there's a truck exclusion, Mr. Yonley, correct me if I'm wrong, on Taylor Street, Bruce Street, Hartwell Ave, and part of Foster Street, only four?
Oh, Sanderson.
And Sanderson, right, right. So, those are in place right now. There's, if we were to create, you mentioned the alternate routes, if we were to create an alternate route in this particular instance, we have a couple of options. We can go towards the Shoba Road, which is arguably a far more scenic route, and it's definitely narrower and sightlines are more challenging, or we can send more traffic into the common, which is not, in my opinion, not reasonable, and that's something that we would have to address and see if there was a reasonable alternative. Those are really the only two alternatives we have to reroute traffic off of Shaker Lane. I have been out there a number of times since last November, I have, I didn't put the kind of effort into it that I put into it today, but I live on Newtown, and I take Shaker Lane intentionally now more than I used to, whether I'm going to grocery shop or whatever, when I'm going towards the common, I go down Shaker Lane just to observe. And I can say that I've seen a Shoba paving truck coming down that road, but I've never seen a tractor trailer or a Dennis Burke, K Burke oil truck, actually, I've never seen a little truck come down Newtown Road, and, believe me, I could, I could put my phone out the window pretty much all day long, but that's the road I chose to buy on, so there's, there's a number of things that I would have concerns over, but we need to look at, you know, cause and effect here, and I don't know that we're going to be able to address this particular issue that you see as a problem, which I respect that, but we have to look at the whole community and see what would be the biggest benefit to the whole community. I do believe, I do agree that Waze and Google Maps and all the different travel services are rerouting traffic, we all see it. I mean, anytime we, if we try to pull out of this parking lot when 495 is jammed up, it's a parking lot, and that happens in every neighborhood.
But vehicles aren't speeding then.
Pardon me? Vehicles aren't speeding, then you just can't get onto the road, which causes problems for emergency vehicles, and there's a whole, there's a whole lot of, it's a whole series of issues that we'd have to take a look at. I very much appreciate the, again, the time and energy and effort that you put into this, I appreciate the conciseness in sending us the video ahead of time, and it definitely makes our job up here a little bit easier to become informed and become educated, and...
So, so to just interrupt you, I think the key, though, what you said at the very beginning was, it's not, what you did wasn't scientific.
That's right.
And that's really kind of what we're asking for, is for you guys to approve an engineering study, to give us the data. Now, section says that, that, A, that, that, those, you know, while it's pretty spelled out, that's, that's a 10-year-old Mass Stop Regulation. It's, it's not exactly written in legalese, and what, actually, one of the main items on, this cannot be a road for an exclusion, is if it's a dumb-bird street, and that's the only thing in that whole regulation that's underlying. Yet, if you're writing down 495, and you see Chumpsford 88, and says no trucks over 2.5 tons, but that exit is for Route 4 and 110, so there's a, there's an exception to the rule right there. We don't know what that is, but, you know, I'm saying...
So that's, that's my point, I mean, we don't know what that, we don't know, sir, sir, sir.
Okay.
We don't know what that is, and there's, I mean, there's, there's a whole bunch of questions I have about some of the data and the facts that you, well, or some of the information that you put forward as facts, which... which, um, I, I, I'm not going to get into it tit for tat, but, um, at the end of the day, we have to make a determination as to what's, what's best for the, for the town as a whole. And, um, part of that is to determine whether or not we want to spend money on an engineering study when we've got professionals in place that, that can give us a determination as to whether or not this, even if it did meet the criteria, if we would want to submit an application.
Um, other board members, I'd like to hear from you.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I think, uh, there's, there's two things that I think we, we can control and get hopefully some traction on. And that's the fact that we just, we're changing it 25 miles an hour. You know, maybe we get the signs on Shakey Lane first if we're gonna start. Um, seriously, I mean, it is a school and it makes, makes a lot of sense. But the complete street side of this, the fact that I saw that it came up in 2016 and, um, I am not well-versed on, in the order that we're, we're doing a lot of this work with sidewalks and what triggers it. You know, I know that obviously the Foster Street project and we're getting money from the state to do that. But I, I was just curious if there's a pecking order, um, where we can move, uh, move certain streets around or become more, um, higher on the, on the list to get this work done, to create sidewalk on that street. Yeah, could you, so those are the two things I think right away, it'd be interesting to see if the 25 mile an hour helps some of that racket, racket and, and the speeding perhaps. But the sidewalks, I think, are a huge piece to this.
Sure. So for the record, Stephen Allen, Director of Public Works. As far as the complete streets, the sidewalk thing, I know Anthony spoke about, uh, the potential for, uh, the safe routes to school grant back.
Yeah.
Right at the pandemic and those kind of got, a lot of that funding went away because nobody knew what budgets were gonna do and things like that. As far as the complete streets plan, the sidewalk on Shakey Lane is on there. I believe it's item sixteen off the top of my head, which was last in the prioritization plan. Uh, they're all ranked when the prioritization plan is put together. About half of those items have been knocked off. There's another handful that are kind of in motion. It's dark Foster Street, uh, in motion, some Russell Street improvements, uh, on the, the King Street end of Russell Street that we're gonna kind of rehash. My hope is over the winter to kind of update that plan, eliminate the stuff that's done, maybe add in some new stuff.
Yeah.
So then that could accelerate that up. And then as those, those grant cycles for complete streets, I believe, are twice a year.
Yeah.
At this point, the town would be eligible for another full, uh, construction grant for the $400,000. So, um, we'd have some initial engineering work and things to go into that. So might be some local funding to get a design set before we could apply for the said grant.
Yeah.
Uh, or we could apply for the grant for design work. I think there's portions that can be design work, but, um, that stuff's all on the table.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's really, that's immediately, that's an immediate fix. The 25 mile an hour should, is huge, but also I think it's, that, that will solve a lot of the safety problems, I think, potential that we, that you're concerned. And it might solve some of the noise. I mean, obviously if somebody's speeding, it's not gonna solve it, but 25 miles an hour is definitely gonna stop some of that racket that we heard on that video.
Ms. Napoli, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, I don't really have much to add.
Okay.
Um, as far as what my other fellow board member said, I do agree that we definitely need more data.
Yeah.
And more work needs to be done on this. We definitely, we certainly have some options available. The speed limit change is one of them. Putting in sidewalks is another. The other thing too is to take into consideration that a lot of our agricultural community uses Shakey Lane to travel from Route Two A up onto Newtown to get to the farms and, um, during hay season. Um, and I would hate to see any restriction put on those, those vehicles in particular. Um, so I think.
Excuse me, those could be an exception though, right? They're kind of like local people there.
Sir, wait till you call them by the chair, please.
Um, so I think, um, we definitely have more work, work to do and there are certain steps that we can take to mitigate this and maybe make things better. I don't think it's gonna be perfect, but I think, um, there are things that we can do and we should just try to pursue those as to the best of our ability.
Mr. Ronbacher?
Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, one, I understand if we put a truck restriction on it, it's gonna direct traffic somewhere else. But could we put a potentially like a partial truck restriction where they say no truck between 7:00 AM and 10:00 AM? Like while the kids are going to school in the morning, right? Um, or like no hazardous, prevent the hazardous trucks off. And if we do that, what would be the ramifications if it's even possible?
I guess I would ask Steve if you have any information on that. And also, you know, what would it, what would, what would be entailed in getting a, a, a traffic study or an engineering study that the state could use to determine whether or not we qualify?
Sure. So, uh, reading the actual DOT document, uh, one C in that section referenced earlier by the presenter, 10A dash nine, it's notwithstanding the foregoing, which is the, um, traffic counts and then the viable alternate route. In certain instances where land is primarily residential in nature and the municipality has requested exclusion only during the hours of darkness. So it could only do a night exclusion. Some communities did, uh, back in the day, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. They get quieter at night. Uh, so that defeats kind of the, having it there in school hours, I guess. As far as the process, on our end, if the board decides to move forward, I have experience with these. I've done a few. You gotta get traffic counts first. My experience over the last few years is a couple of days, one week, and then a few different days, like the following week, do like a Monday, Tuesday. And then maybe like a Wednesday, Thursday, just hire, uh, you can either get a consultant, they can do it all, or I, I, uh, a traffic company. Take them out through the counts, I can make the data. And then it's gonna be pretty simple in that data. You know, what your volume of passenger vehicles, and then it will break down everything from single axle, rear wheel, double axle, triaxle, tractor trailer, school bus, UPS. It'll know exactly what it is based on the, uh, wheelbase.
That's just hit the five percent mark. Qualify base.
Correct. Yeah, so you have to be, you know, generally in that five to eight kind of scale to even, you know, consider the process. If you're less than the five, they're not even really gonna consider it. And then the second part of that is the viable alternative route. You know, so here you're going, point A to B is great road to Goldsmith, so you gotta get people from great road to Goldsmith. So as Mr. Coats said, you gotta go up and around Neshoba to Nagog, maybe back down Newtown to get there, or down through the common, or the left on Goldsmith at the common and up that way. So that's as simple as preparing a map. Do a little table with mileage, you know? It's only whatever Shakey Lane is off the top of my head, three quarters of a mile or something, but you gotta go five miles this way. You know, four miles this way. These roads are collectors, arterials. These roads are, you know, twenty-foot wide, residential, windy up the hill by the orchard back down.
Yeah.
So that's all stuff to consider.
And do you know, give a ballpark figure for doing a traffic study account?
So it seemed like, uh, before Joe Layden had left, he had talked to Green International, gave him a proposal. The first step was some traffic counts, some turning movements, uh, a few kind of days of maybe watching traffic and preparing kind of a couple of quick maps and a memo. I wanna say it was around $2,000 off the top of my head.
Okay.
Um, just for that kind of first step. And then if, that, that approves, then you move forward to the, the full package.
Thank you.
Uh, for the board to okay, and then DOT is ultimately approval authority.
Thank you. So I guess what's the pleasure of the board at this time?
I will say it's a lot cheaper than I thought he was gonna say.
Yeah, well.
I was thinking more thirty.
It was the first step.
Yeah.
I'll go first and I'll, you know, it's like, it's not, not something that, uh, the residents that have written into us are gonna like. But, um, given that street, given the, the viable alternate routes, and given my unscientific data, I, I don't think it would prove out. I really do not think it would prove out. I mean, I, my kids all went to Shakey Lane. I've been traveling Shakey Lane for, for years. Although I realize that trucks do go up and down that road, um, I, I don't think it's going to prove out. So I don't think it's an investment that we should make. I do think that we could potentially revisit it if after the speed limit being reduced and potentially moving the sidewalks up in the priority list to see if maybe we do compete, we do get into complete streets or the, uh, safe, safe routes to school program gets reenacted, uh, maybe with the new governor. I, I think that there's, uh, this is something that, anytime you mention safety and, and kids, it's certainly a, a, a huge concern. I don't, I don't think this meets the criteria that we would need to meet in order for us to go to the state and get the, get the approval.
Gary, or Cindy, do you have opinions?
Yeah, I, I think tabling the study makes sense pending where we can get done with the speed limit. And, uh, I, I would like to see at least six months of a speed limit change generally. That really 25 miles an hour slows, slows down quite a bit. Um, and then see where we get with the sidewalks. And if that's the next phase, you know, if we're talking, uh, something that's sooner than later, then we've got a good phased approach. And if we still have issues, then we might have to dig a little deeper.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Wilson.
Thanks, thank you for that presentation. That's something, you know, I've, I've driven a little in my, in my life and I, uh, I use that road all of the time. So, um, you know, unless you're living there, you don't, you don't know and you don't see what, you know, what you presented, so.
Mr. Ronbacher?
I can agree with Mr. DeKoest that I don't think that the study will prove, um, what the residents are hoping for. I would ask that they give the speed limit, uh, change a chance and come back, you know, in late fall or the winter and say, and give us an update, right? And at that point, we determined that it is, um, we can spend a couple thousand dollars in the traffic study. But I also don't know what we're going to do as an alternate route. So that's going to be a jiggy, sticky wicked.
I, I share that concern.
But I do think we should do whatever we can to make it, you know, less, less, um, a less chosen path, right? If we can't do anything to make that happen, then let's, let's be able to happen a little bit. And having the more data to say that there are a lot of trucks or there aren't a lot of trucks would also then help prove that.
And I would add that I would, I would like to see the sidewalks there, I think would be, it would be nice to try to prioritize those as we go into the next round of grants, because I think that could alleviate some of the safety concerns. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation and I appreciate your time you spent on it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for being candid, Chuck. If you have questions for me about, you're not sure about some of that information, you guys all know my email address.
I walk by.
No, serious.
Thank you, no, I appreciate that.
And, and I just wasn't sure at the end there what I was supposed to talk. I, I apologize.
It's all good.
This is my first one, so.
All good. Thanks for being here.
All right, thanks, guys.
Five B, tennis courts and pickleball. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
I would also say we should look at essentially a bike lane or striping for bikes for the safety of the unique biker on the road.
That's part of complete street.
That is something else we can look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we are gonna be kicking off the, uh, the.
Pack.
Yeah, the bicycle pedestrian master plan. So certainly I'm sure that that will be part of that.
Great. Thank you. All right. Alicia, are you a she?
I'm ready to go.
Hello.
Alicia.
Alicia, sorry.
Alicia Day, Director of Parks and Recreation. Thanks for having me here tonight. So we've been kind of going on this path of trying to figure out a, a location to be able to put a tennis and pickleball court site to replace the current one that we have over here where the senior center will be going. So, uh, currently back in April, we did a presentation or at least a memo where we presented eighteen different sites within, um, the community that were, um, owned by the town of Littleton. And, um, we were, were reviewed by Kathy Miller, the chief assessor, Martin Twohill, town planner, Amy Green, conservation agent, Ed Mullin. So we have a, a group that kind of gets together and, uh, talks about these different parcels in lands, uh, in town, sorry. So, um, on July 20th, I sat down with, um, Anthony Ansaldi and Ryan Ferrara and we reviewed those eighteen sites and kind of whittled it down to, um, six sites to present to the select board as potential options for locations where we could do, uh, pickleball and tennis courts. And ideally, we would like to be able to, uh, choose sites so that we can go into a design process to figure out, um, if we have two or three sites, what those would look like and what potentially the cost could be to, um, create those sites. So the six sites that we have for you tonight are in no particular order, um, but the first one that we have on here is on Russell Street. So this is a, uh, area that we've had, uh, under Parks and Recreation for quite some time. So just to kind of give you an idea, the first slide that was back there just gives an overview of the town of Littleton and where each of these locations is. So, um, the orange dot will show you where it is in town. So this parcel, 82 Russell Street, uh, this is across the street from, uh, Littleton Middle School and Russell Street Elementary. It does have a fair amount of acreage, so six point eight, nine, or eight, nine acres, which is great. Uh, there are some potential issues. One would be engineering that would be required, um, because there is a rocky ledge and a very steep road that currently goes down there now. Uh, so we would need engineering to figure out how to be able to access that site a little bit better. There is currently a road there, but it's, uh, if you've ever driven down that little.
Jackie.
Questionable. So, and the other issue that we have, um, with this specific site is that it could potentially need a sound barrier because it's right next to 495. Additionally, um, the, the parcel that is behind it is part of, uh, Littleton Water and that is potential well site in the future. So we would definitely have to bring them in in that, uh, conversation if that was something that we chose to do moving forward. So, uh, that is one of the sites. I don't know if you want to go through and if you have questions on each site, or if you want to just wait and do questions at the end, it's up to you.
We can do them. I think we can do them at the end.
Perfect. Okay.
Yeah.
And 300 King Street is our next one, and I will use this as, uh, a good time and opportunity to remind people that we have a limited amount of space that's available to us, right? So we're just looking at whatever options that we have currently that could potentially work. So 300 King, and I say this behi- before I do talk about 300 King Street because this is definitely a space that is used at capacity. It is not an ideal location for this at all. However, if we had to make this work, could we? Sure. Um, but we would have to look at removing some of the facilities that are already currently there to replace them with these pickleball and tennis courts. So, um, it, at this point in time, with the limited amount of parking that we have, it's with the playground, which is a beautiful destination playground, and we're very lucky to have that in town. Um, our new basketball courts, um, and the walking path, it's, it's just a lot all in that one area. Uh, and even though the parcel does go back further, there's a lot of wetlands further back. So it's not really a usable space back further.
Too bad. It's a great location.
I know, it really is. And it theoretically, you know, we've always, I think, um, what a conservation desires has been to have like a boardwalk path to be able to go from the school, you know, to the playground, which would be awesome if we could do that someday. But, uh, it is very wet back there. So the next one we have, and again, this comes on the list of, we only have so many spaces to, to work with here. So, um, these are just things that we're suggesting, yeah, I already hear Gary saying no. And that's understandable. Uh, it is an existing park infrastructure, right? So it is something that we do have and it's next to the fire department, which is a, a positive. There's 2.25 acres. Um, the issue that we have with this is that there is a lack of parking with that parcel. There is some that is behind the fire department, but again, if we're putting in a facility that's going to have multiple courts that perhaps, perhaps will not be enough. Uh, and additionally, there is also draining issues, um, with that park as well. The DPW and the, um, all the highway parks guys have done a really amazing job the last couple of years of trying to work on that drainage, but it's still an ongoing issue. So our next one, we have the Littleton High School. So, um, the. So this is, you know, the area that we have with the fields, this is something that is going to go under construction relatively soon. We, you know, we're going to be putting in the leaching field for the sewer out there. It's a good location because it's right off of 495 and it would be near the high school tennis courts that are already there. So the issue that you have with this is, I know that they are currently sort of on a path to create the septic, the leaching field, but they're just going to kind of put it back the way that it is, right? There's not anything spectacular that's going to be happening with that. So, you know, it's not really part of the plan to add this into it or do anything more to it. It being on the school property, it's kind of conflicting with the timeframe in which people tend to use the courts for pickleball, which tends to be earlier in the morning and on weekdays. So, you know, that could create a parking issue over time. So, yeah. Number four, moving on to number five. Number five, so this is an interesting one. This is Balsam Lane. There is a chunk of that property up front, so it wouldn't be the entire 5.82 acres that's available. And I do believe it does have a bit of.
Wet component.
Well, it's definitely wet in the back, for sure. And the conversations that I've had with Amy Green is that, you know, there's a possibility of doing some things up front, not the entire parcel itself. So that would be the interesting part of figuring out how much. The other issue is that there could potentially be a lot of rocky ledge out there, which is not, doesn't necessarily lend itself well to, you know, creating flat surfaces. So, you know, it's next to the train station, we definitely would have to grade it and the access would have to be connected to that development road. There is no direct access onto Foster Street, so, yeah. And our last one that we have is Cooper Farm. So this is 4.384 acres. Pro's, good amount of space. It's in a beautiful prominent location in the community. You know, this is a parcel that was given to the town for this purpose of recreational use. It could, one of the things that we've talked about with conservation is being able to create a walking path along this property that would go from Goldsmith to Great Road, that we potentially could create, you know, a walking path down to the common area, as we're talking about our complete streets. So there's potential for that. You know, the big issues with this is that we definitely wouldn't be able to, we would have to grade the area. It's not really a prep site ready to go. And there are some trees on the lot that would have to be removed for us to be able to use that whole lot, which, you know, if we're looking at turning this into, you know, if we had space to be able to put in the pickleball courts and the tennis courts and then maybe have some field space, or I know people have been excited about the thought of a dog park, you know, kind of lends to the ability to do all of those things. So those are the six parcels that we have for you to take a look at. One of the components that I did want to add to this is just kind of an idea of a schedule. It was one thing we didn't really add into the presentation, but, you know, as I was thinking about this a little bit more, you know, there's essentially five parts to create a project like this. The site selection for this design will be the first part of that. Depending on, you know, if sites are selected relatively quickly, that could take about, you know, a month to process that. We would have to be able to put together a request for that design, that report, for them to, for us to select somebody and for them to actually complete the reports, probably going to take about two months to do that. If there's engineering needed for the site, that takes about another two months. And then when we finally get to that place where we have a design locked in, we have our bid process, takes about 30 days plus time to review and bid that award. And then the construction should take anywhere between two to three months. So from now until opening, it could take between nine to 11 months, depends on the weather. I'm, you know, adding a little bit in there. And just from past knowledge, December and January are typically the best times to go out for that bid. You can usually get more favorable prices because the contractors are lining up for their spring projects. So just a few things to, to think about in this process.
When you looked at these sites, did you plan to replace two tennis courts and two pickleball courts? Or just two tennis courts with pickleball in them or what?
So the minimum that we talked about was replacing what we currently have.
Like for like.
Yeah, like for like. However, the needs for our community are more than that. So if we're just looking at being able to, you know, relieve that site so that we can use that for building purposes, we could look at like for like, but I think with potential grant opportunities, we, we could get something more usable for our community as it's growing.
And how, how much, do you know how many acres it would take to do, say, four tennis courts?
I knew you were going to ask that.
Yeah.
In my first, and I didn't print it out, so my apologies, and I will get back to you. So the first memo that I did in April did have the actual square footage that a two, sorry, a doubles full-size tennis court would be. And on that full doubles court.
3,948 square feet.
Thank you, sir. Matthew for the wins.
4,000 square feet per court.
So you can get four pickleball courts on that.
Okay. And I assume you probably double that with the space around it and.
Right.
That was for two courts.
No, that's for one court.
That was for one doubles tennis court.
So about perhaps 8,000.
Two, one, two courts.
Two tennis courts, no, so one doubles tennis court. So you can play single or you can play doubles. Doubles, you would have 4,000 square feet.
Got it. Okay, so any of these would potentially be big enough for, let's say, four, four courts?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any of these sites would get us the, the minimum that we're requiring, but some would be able to give us potentially more.
Comments from the board?
If I may, Mr. Chair. So back to, um, thank you, Alicia, for putting together this presentation. So back to Cooper Farm. The parcel that you referenced, that's the parcel that's adjacent to the farmhouse currently, right, right on?
That's correct. So it's right behind their septic field.
Is that really 4.384 acres?
That's what it is listed as on our assessor's GIS map.
Yeah, because it looks smaller to me. It looks to me like, I even thought initially when the septic went in everything that it kind of encroached on that parcel. It does not look to me like it's 4.384 acres personally.
That, I mean, you could always have a survey go out.
Oh, look.
Hey, hi.
It's actually larger than what we proposed to demarcate to the town. So it's actually bigger than what we proposed.
On the original plan?
On the original plan.
Does that mean it's bigger than 4.38?
It's, it's.
Yeah, I, what are the current measurements on it?
If she has it up, up the latest assessor's, that's going to be right.
Yeah, that's exactly what it's about.
I'm just thinking, just from me, just looking at it, I'm like, I don't know if it looks that big, but if it is, it is, that's all. And so, you know, Cooper Farm seems like it would be a viable location, as well as Russell Street, in my opinion. As far as 300 King Street go, are you seeing a lot of visitors from out of town to 300 King Street? Or is that primarily residential use?
Everywhere. So it is actually listed as a destination playground in the state of Massachusetts. And so we have a lot of people that visit, even from out of state. You'll see people far from New Hampshire, Vermont. It's crazy.
We need to get on social media and start slamming it on Yelp.
It's amazing. I mean, it's a great playground and we're lucky to have it, but yes, it's, it's well-known.
Right. I mean, I guess my only absolute opposition would be Fay Park to any of these proposed sites.
Funny, I had the same issue.
I guess it's like that, just take that off the table, in my opinion, so.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah. Couple things timeline-wise. You know, I've been looking at what's going on at Shattuck Street. We really have to have this open in the spring. I mean, that's how, that's the timeline we're on. Because you, you're going to break ground and once you break ground, obviously that court's gone.
Right.
So when they start taking that, it's great to do this project over the time period that we're not playing tennis or people aren't playing tennis, right? So that it opens up. It sounds like it could open up May, June of next year, which would be palatable. So this is something I, we definitely, no matter what we choose, we have to act on, but that's. But.
If I may, we do have a few options for like emergency purposes, if you will, emergency tennis courts. So if, if we really did need to be able to take this site offline and needed to have something in between, there are a few options I'm not a huge fan of. So for example, we could paint pickleball lines at the tennis court at 300, oh, sorry, at the basketball court at 300 King. Those are going to have to be resurfaced relatively soon anyway. So that's something that we could do as an interim, just to ensure that we have that, that facility available to the public. So there are options available to us, they're not great, but, you know.
All right, so the two I had actually weren't colored in, just in my own brain when I went kind of looking at these properties too. Interesting, the Russell Street property around Wickham Field, even behind the backstop, there's a ton of space there. And I always, even if you were to encroach a little bit on that parking lot, this seems like a lot of space there to, all the way to where the batting cages are.
Like back behind the trap.
Stuff we could move. It just seems like.
Close to the path, Matthew.
Create, park, and it makes, yes, closer to the path, you can walk down, it's not much further than where we are at. But that's obviously a lot of work, talking with the schools.
Conservation.
In conservation, but it's.
Right.
Even on the other side of the Wickham Field there, there just seems like a lot of land there to be able to do exactly what we're talking about, but I don't know if that's even been considered.
We did, that was on that 18 that we looked at previously back in April. That has, was taken off of the list because of access issues. Because there's not, for us to be able to access it, we either would have to go through school property, right? Which is already, if you think about the entrance to Russell Street Elementary and having that really narrow parking lot that they have there that goes to the track.
Yeah.
To be able, you'd have to go all the way around and through that and to have people coming there, you know, all hours of the day. And, you know, it, it makes it difficult. And then on the other side of it, you have Connet Park, which I have talked to the land trust on that. And they're amenable to have people going through, but they're not amenable to creating any additional parking spaces or any other access, you know, to that space.
And the other one was the high school. I, you know, I looked at the high school, the map where the current tennis courts are. It drives me crazy, we just didn't build four tennis courts there and be done with it. But where those buses are, they're, we, there's the problem. If you found room to park the buses somewhere else, you literally have your tennis courts on that property. So that was, that was something that just driving down there, I was like, why, why isn't this even an option? And then there's still space, we're talking about potentially moving the courts on the top side of that field. Let's create a little bit more parking out of that then instead, if we're worried about that part. But it's just my own.
The high school was just on there as general, so, you know, you can have that conversation.
I mean, it's kind of like we're, we're getting pushed into using the Cooper property, which I, I mean, I would love to hear a little bit more about people that actively played tennis and what the problems they might foresee with that property.
Yeah. I mean, the majority of people, so we have a very healthy tennis program and a lot of the tennis users tend to be kids, for, for now. Well, the ones that do our programs anyway, I should clarify.
Yeah.
So all of the adults that come in, they just sort of, you know, whenever the courts are available, will come in. I think this space works okay. You know, the reality is that there's only enough space for, you know, if you think about it, if you have, let's say, you and I want to go play tennis, right? We're going to play on a doubles court and we'll take that up. So it's like you and I, and then there's enough spaces for somebody else to play. That's it. So, you know, there's not a lot of options. And then if you have the pickleball courts on top of the tennis courts, now you have the pickleball crowd that's, you know, trying to fight for that space with the tennis crowd as well.
And the parking, Cooper, it's kind of going to look like Liberty Field up on, picturing it almost up at.
On a squirrel?
Box Road on Liberty Square.
I would assume we'd want to put the parking next to the road to keep the tennis courts away from the traffic.
Right, it would be a drive-in, probably diagonal parking a little longer, then a drive-out and then the courts. But I, there's a lot of people smarter than that to me, so.
That's the beauty of sending it out for design.
I mean, the Cooper, it just seems like it's up on a hill and it's open in the, I don't know, harder to access walkability wise. I think that's what Shattuck really has over everything, right? The walkability factor.
I'll be honest, I do think a lot of people do drive here to use those courts. I mean, I, that's what I see, but, you know, I could be wrong. I definitely know that there are a few people in the neighborhood that use it.
Yeah.
But for most, I mean, you know, all of our pickleball people are coming from different towns and they're parking here.
Mark, do you have any comments?
Do the high schools teams still use the, the Shattuck Street courts? Because if that, if they do, then that would also change the timeline or we'd have to come up with another plan for that.
Right, so they did this past spring. As far as them using, I think there's new courts that are over in the Weber property. I don't know if they've decided that they're using those in addition. But like I said, last spring, they were here at town hall.
They, they did use the, the courts at Weber this past season.
Okay, so then they were using all of them.
I did want to say one thing about, if I could. Though, that double tennis court that we built there took just under a half an acre. So it's bigger than what I think you, the numbers you guys threw around. With that apron, you know, then the fence has a little bit of an apron.
175 by 175.
Yeah. Totally right.
All right.
Thirty thousand square feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. It's owned by the H.O.
But the town, the school committee.
They have like a legal agreement to use it for the.
Just for the tennis.
Days, so.
Good, thanks. Mark, anything else?
So, so from my understanding of the school wants to use them, they basically, to put both the boys and the girls together in one location, which is what they want, if they were to be using this court, they would need four courts. So they might want to stick with ones at high school and the Weber, I don't know. But they would actually need four courts on one side. I like the Cooper property, I also like the Russell Street ones the best, I think. I think putting this up to, I don't know if we have to pick a site or put it up to design to pick a site because they might tell us something different, like that, you know, that one of those sites isn't feasible because of bedrock or something, or something else, going further down. I think with the discussions of a dog park in town too, we might want to incorporate some of that as a potential add-on or something in the design to figure out, are we building one park? Are we building two parks, right? Because if we can do this all at once and spend a little more on the engineering up front and figure out that one park either on Russell Street or on the Cooper Farm, that we incorporate these, we'd be better off than going and building two. So I did have a question if, on what the criteria was actually eliminating some of these other sites.
Like when we went through everything?
Like the police station, for instance.
Yeah, so some of the sites were in residential areas, a fair amount of them were. Or parcels that would have to be combined together, which is something that we are looking at with the town parcels at, at this time. So a lot of those were very easily thrown out. Some of them had a lot of issues with wetlands. There were quite a few actually that I can think of. One specifically on Goldsmith that would be great for it, but, you know, we did perk testing for that before for the bath house and it just, it failed miserably. So, you know, a lot of these places definitely either had some issues with being in neighborhoods or the wetlands issue.
You need porta potties and things like that too.
I mean, we could, ultimately, you know, coming down the pipeline, and this is a topic for another day, but ultimately coming down the pipeline, the. topic for another day, but ultimately, coming down the pipeline, the state is looking at a bill to have it required that there's water options in parks. So it's not something that's anytime soon, it's just something that, you know, as a state association for Massachusetts Parks and Rec, we've talked about that, you know, a couple of years in a row, that it's potentially coming down the pipeline. So to be able to have that option is a smart choice at this point.
Dana, okay. Thank you. I would also echo what Gary said, I think the Russell Street site, the school site, I would say I like where the batting cages are, makes more sense to me, too, when trying to figure out how to move those, so that more and more facilities are all together, and it's not necessarily impacting the school, it's walking distance to the library and the senior center and everything else, and that has some advantages, though I don't know if it's realistic to put it there or not. Obviously, you're not doing a dog park there at the same time, so I just kind of contradict myself, but I do think looking at that might be worthwhile, too, where the batting cages are.
So, if I may, we have limited funds for, to study, and I think that if we narrow it down to a couple, we could eventually go out, get a design firm on, show them these sites, get their opinions on what they think, and then have more information for the board. I think we were looking at, you know, which I'm hearing, a couple of sites, I'm here in Russell Street School, I'm here in Cooper Farm, could be an option, you know, if that was the two that the board wanted us to concentrate on, then we could do some due diligence and come back and have some better information. You know, ultimately, when we were talking as a staff, we envisioned that one thing that we really don't have is a park that all encompasses a lot of different, you know, tennis courts, pickleball, dog park, play structure, and other play structure, dog park, potentially even restrooms if we could do it. So that's something that would be, it's one thing that we, really would be nice if we had, and of course, we do have the ability to make this a CPC project, and also with the grants that Alicia brought up, so, you know, I thought was, if, you know, if we could do it, it'd be nice to really do it nice and really have a nice destination, we even talked with a FITRec, I think there's a grant out there for a FITRec course that would kind of be cool, too, that the community could take advantage of, so these are some of the things that we've talked about internally, and certainly, if we had a couple, we can move in that direction and get more information for the board.
Mr. Decost, do you have...
Well, just going down the FITRec, I mean, they brought up the police station, is the van not available because the FITRec course is there now, or is it because it backs up to residential, or...
No.
If I may?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a site where it was always, anything to go back, there was always frowned upon for the police, for a couple of reasons. I think they used that as a potential landing spot for a helicopter.
Lifeline.
Yeah, lifeline, right. So they utilize it, the dog does some training there, so I think it was not designed...
That's fine, I just...
By public safety.
To Mark's point, just, you know...
Yeah, we definitely...
Why would some of these cross off the list?
Yes.
Couple of locations that, and I don't even know, I wish Steve was still here, at some point in time, we're going to get to a point where we could potentially do something on top of the cap dump on Spec Pond, you know, because it's, there's a lot of communities that have done, I mean, if you go to West Roxton, right along the Charles River, where the old city dump was, right on the VFW Parkway, that is Millennium Park, it was Tom Monito's, you know, crown jewel.
We'll name it after you.
Yeah.
Hey!
But I think that's a little further down the road, but that, I just want to kind of put that in the back.
No, it's already there, believe me.
Good, good.
Yep.
The other location that I, two locations that I don't think were on the list, were 242 King Street, where the water department just purchased to put the...
Treatment.
Treatment, man, and that's a pretty significant piece of property there. If you come out of Russell Street, you take a right, like you're going to go over 495, just before you go over 495 on the right-hand side, there's a farmhouse there with a big bond that's going to come down, and that's where the...
Didn't know about that.
That's where the sewage treatment plant's going to go.
Okay.
And also, the middle school field, that now has lights on it, that used to be a practice field for football, I think lacrosse, youth lacrosse, lacrosse does use it, but was that even...
No, because that is not even supposed to be used as a field, that is technically just supposed to be grass on the side of the school. We took that on as an emergency situation to make sure that we had a location for lacrosse when they first started in town, and that's something we ultimately would like to get away from, that piece of land.
Who put that restriction on us?
For what, that...
That it can't be used, doesn't it?
Oh, no, there's no restriction, I'm just saying, like, that was ultimately, that was just a piece of grass, that we kind of like worked with the schools and worked with youth lacrosse and said, we're going to, we have to use this as a field, there's no options. So, you know, ideally, when we talk about the field use, and we did the field use, field needs study back in 2016, you know, they talked about, even with that spot, they said it's not really a great spot to have a field, and that ideally, you should have something that's more field-like, not just a piece of grass.
Chuck, if I may, one of the things that Alicia pointed out earlier in our presentation was that the courts are really used during the day.
They are.
And, you know, there's challenge with some parking there that may factor into putting something there.
That would be a concern, is the use while school is in session, that there would be now an additional use or need for parking.
So I also think, I agree with Mark, that the Russell Street site and the Cooper Farm site seem like the ones that are the most reasonable, with the least downsides. I'm curious about 242 King Street, I wonder if there'd be too much grading to do there, you'd have to talk to the water department to see if there's room.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but...
Mr. Mullen.
Yeah, Mr. Mullen.
Just to speak to 242 King Street, the structure of the house there is a historic structure, so the removal of that structure is going to be...
I see.
A monumental task for the water department, so...
Thank you.
It's going to remain for quite some time.
Yeah, we have a demolition delay, right, so...
Okay, so that's good to know.
Anyways, yeah.
So that may not be feasible, then?
No, right away.
But I would suggest that we, that you look into Russell Street and Cooper Farm locations as the next steps, unless the board has any other strong opinions about it? No?
I just want to clarify, because there's a Russell Street that's on here, which is the one across the street?
Eighty-two Russell, I think.
Wickham?
At the bend of the road across from Sudak, construction, Sudak, across the bridge.
Eighty-two.
But I do think, Gary and Cindy, and I think even Mark were talking about where the batting cages are, I think that, the continuity of the path to that area, I think it's worth a look. It's level, whether or not it's too close to conservation, I'm not going to define, but I think that would be a good place to look at.
That's actually the spot that I thought the board was talking about, the Wickham Field, because that other parcel, which Alicia brought up...
Some engineering challenges.
There's some challenges that would jack up the price, you know, we think, pretty considerably, so Wickham certainly, and Cooper is probably the...
Two front roads?
Yeah.
If we're going to incorporate a dog park, I would say that the eighty-two Russell Street's a better option for us to take a look at.
Absolutely, yeah. We can do three, and we could talk to the design firm in there and see if we can, how much we can get out of them and go from there.
Sure, let's do that, see if you can get it.
Sure, so just so the board knows, that Ryan and Alicia are going to be working together on this project, because I'm going to stick with the senior center, so we know the importance of having, to Gary's point, those courts available when we demo the existing courts. So we're trying to move concurrently together to solve two problems.
Okay, thank you. Also?
Any other questions?
Yes, very briefly.
Yeah, Maureen Adam of Five Oak Farm Row, I would just like to express that maybe at this point in time, take this opportunity not to make it a like-for-like, I think the state has expressed, you know, the interest in pickleball has really exploded over the last couple of years, and I also agree with the tennis courts possibly not always being so close to the schools, because there is a hesitation, you know, to be using during the day if you move the schools, so maybe we just take this opportunity to, you know, look at a couple of places and make, you know, one kind of, that kind of daytime older person if I'm using it during the day, and still leave, you know, the schools for the rules, and really recognize the explosion in both of these particular recs there, they're going to get bigger and the population just getting older, so just like that on the record.
Thank you. Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, pleasure.
All right. Six A, Nine Air Road. Find it on my... Hi, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Dave McKay from Ira O'Connell, I represent Field Development and the related real estate trusts that are here tonight on this item, so I'm happy to speak with, to the item, but I don't know if the board has any questions, particular issues that they'd like us to talk about.
I went out and visited the site today, I think Mr. Decost has seen it recently, have any of your board members?
I have.
Okay. I think what we're determining today is the state of the landscaping and the stabilization of the slopes, is that correct? Is that accurate, the summary?
I think last time the fields were in, if I may, we, I don't know, we had decided that you'd go back and you'd try to comply with what our expectations were for growing grass essentially on the slope, to contain the slopes, and I will say that on a number of occasions when I've gone by, I've seen Michael field watering the slopes and...
I fertilized it two weeks ago and...
I can't give Michael credit, you have to jump in, don't you?
I did my job.
Right, so we were here in, or, this issue was last, before the board in June, I think, and the board tabled it at that time. The fields have since hydroceded again and fertilized, I think in early July that was done, so the grass has been established, notwithstanding the drought, which has certainly made conditions a little bit more challenging. The plantings have also been established, there were ninety green giant arborvitae, they're about five feet tall, I was just out there before we came here tonight, and ninety tricolored dappled willows. We've also submitted an engineering study certifying the slope stability, so I think that's in order, I understand that the building inspector was out there as well. So our hope is that tonight we can get a vote from the board to, to find that the fields are in substantial compliance with the conditions of the permit, and also to get a release of the bond.
Mr. Mullen, do you have any comments on the state of the site?
Sure, thank you. Ed Mullen, I'm building commissioner, I was out on site and photographed myself, so I guess I'm six foot two and that's up to my knee in grass, so I wanted to verify that the slopes were stabilized and grass was growing. I also went up to the top of the slopes and stood next to the bushes, and they're at my, between my elbow and my shoulder at every bush, so they have grown substantially in the past month and a half, so to verify, they are growing, the grass is there again via the drought.
Yeah.
The slopes are...
A bit brown, but covered.
Yeah.
Mr. Wilson, do you have any comments?
No, I mean, I came in after this really started, but from what I can see that, yeah, it's, I think I'm ready to move on.
Ms. Napoli or Mr. Rombacher?
I don't have anything, I'm ready to move on.
I don't have anything.
You ready to vote? All right, let's, I move that we vote to release the surety bond.
Shall I?
No, please, yes, I don't want to steal your thunder.
Move the select board vote, that the permit holders Eminem Realty Trust, PMM Realty Trust, and Field Development are substantially in compliance with conditions identified in the board's July 13th, 2020, and June 7th, 2021, for the rule of permits.
Go ahead.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Gary, roll call vote, Mr. Decost?
Decost is aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Rombacher?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, five-zero, the vote passes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
May we also get a vote for the release of the bond as well, or does the board consider that within the scope of the vote that you just took?
The permit...
I think it's contingent on the, with the bond, so if they approve...
Or the bond's condition on the permit?
Right, I'm sorry.
The bond's condition on the permit, I haven't seen it, I would say that...
The motion, okay.
I can make a motion if that's...
If we want to do another motion just to cover it, Jenny's fine, doesn't hurt.
Move the select board, release the bond relative to permit holders Eminem Realty Trust, PMM Realty Trust, and Field Development for Nine Air Road, for the rule of permits.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Cindy, roll call vote, Mr. Decost?
Decost is aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Rombacher?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, five-zero.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Have a great night.
Thanks.
All right, Nogog Orchard Ad hoc Working Group update. Ms. Napoli, are you going to take this one?
I am, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to acknowledge that Jenny Merrill is here. Yeah, I invited town council to come.
Thank you.
To, so if I may, just go through this overview first, maybe, and then invite town council just to explain a few nuances that the board should be aware of as we move forward with this process.
If you want Tim's presentation's up there, so if you wanted to show what work is done, you can do that after.
Okay, so did everybody receive the summary that I circulated with happiness help? So thank you very much. So the working group met and we went through the RFP proposal that had been submitted, as well as the respondent's submission in return, and so we identified specific areas, positive aspects of the response, concerns that we had, and areas where we felt more information was needed and where we might have questions. So overall, the respondents were very pleased with the submission from Storm Alongside to the RFP that was posted. Our concerns basically revolve around parking, and if there's any events or an increase in usage of the orchard, where will parking be, and we've heard that concern shared by residents as well. We also had just a concern making sure that he is aware of the self-help parcels and the real structure of the property itself, because there is agricultural land, there's conservation land, there's self-help parcels, and there's just different things that are all encompassed there, and we were just curious what he intends to do to mitigate the impact and help preserve any of the adjacent conservation properties. And this is, number three is where Jenny's going to come in, in a little bit, but how much is the respondent willing to invest in the buildings? With the help of Mr. Mullen, we've already identified certain aspects of the buildings of the property that need repairs, and there's certain things that I believe the board, the town's responsible for, and then going forward, certain areas that the New Lessie would be responsible for. And, you know, he talked about making it, creating a destination that gives visitors an experience, you know, what work's going to be, need to be done on the orchard property to create that ambiance that he is proposing in his response. We just want to make sure plans for the orchard align with APR. The licensing was a question as well, which I'm certain that he does, have the appropriate licenses or will be able to procure them. Noise and traffic were the biggest concern that we've heard from the abutters throughout this process, so those are something, areas that we need to discuss with the respondent, and the other was deer fencing. He talked about installing deer fencing, and there was a lot of concern about the impact that would have on conservation, wildlife corridors, and things like that, so those are other things that need to be addressed. Specifically, the respondent did not provide a pesticide application plan, although he stated that he's planning to hire an onsite manager who will have a pesticide applicator license, we need to find out where he is in that process. There was more information that was needed on the financial piece of it. Mr. Pickard, Will Pickard's here in the audience, and he had done some research just to try to get some information about prior crop yields and things like that, and I also reached out to a gentleman who used to work at the orchard, who really couldn't provide any historic information about crop yields, all of that information unfortunately has kind of disappeared, so those are, that's a conversation that we need to have with the respondent. The other thing was equipment, he did not provide equipment maintenance plan, which was something that we specifically asked for, and he does have an ancillary operation and... And he does have an ancillary operation in Sherburne, and we were just wondering, is he planning to buy new equipment for the orchard, share equipment, share employees or things of the like? Those need to be addressed with him. And then the other two is what additional tax revenue can the town, could the town expect to receive from the orchard in the event weddings and other events were held at the property? And certainly that is something that's going to warrant further discussion from the board just because of the impact on the residential neighborhood. We need to really pin that down, what exactly that looks like. And then the other question was pretty simple, will they plan on participating in local farmer markets? So that was basically the overview from the working group. And I did want to invite Jenny in just because I wanted to make the board aware, discussions that we've had through the working group, and I'll invite you to the podium to talk about this, as far as the property itself, the buildings themselves and what we should plan to do in anticipation of having somebody move into those properties. I think it's really important that we have that discussion, especially considering the condition of the building and the house at this point. So Jenny, do you want to go up then?
Hi, Jenny Merrill, Town Council's office. Good to see you guys in person again finally. So you're discussing, you know, what they can and can't do with the buildings with respect to, you know, public construction law in general?
Basically, yeah. So we identified, you know, some gutter replacement, mildew mitigation, the barn itself that's directly across from the house, the whole exterior facade needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
And just trying to determine who is responsible for that.
Right.
Before the less see takes possession of the property and then who would be responsible for that maintenance and upkeep going forward.
Well, certainly before, before they take possession of the property, that's our responsibility. And we actually, we tried to address this a bit in the lease, with the, with the lease of town buildings like this, you have this delicate dance of not creating a public construction project by means of a lease, you know, where you say, here's our building and please fix it up and then give it back to us, you know? There's been some SJC decisions that have interpreted leases as public construction projects because of many factors, but, you know, the length of the lease and how much town funding is being used and who really benefits from the construction projects. That all gets factored into whether or not a particular building construction project on town-owned buildings is technically public construction. So it's, the answer's really, it depends. In part, it depends on the term of the lease, like I said. If we put this out for an RFP for terms of up to 20 years, but left it for you guys to decide based on the proposals that you get, you know, if it's going to be a five-year lease that you can renew, you know, for up to 20 years, or if you're just going to award for 20 years right off the bat, you know? So some of the projects that somebody could do over a 20-year lease maybe wouldn't necessarily be considered public construction because you're not going to be able to enjoy that benefit as the owner. And certainly the longer term the lease is, the more likely it is that that wouldn't be considered public construction. So what we have in our draft lease that we included in the RFP is basically reciting the law and saying that they need to consider whether or not public construction applies. They need to ask your approval before undertaking any project and it's going to be decided on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
I mean, they could comply, you know, they as a tenant could comply with those laws themselves.
Okay. And so going forward now at this point, certainly we need to sit down with the respondent and maybe address some of the questions that the working group came up with, just to get more information from the respondent too. But how do we approach the repairs that do need to be due, performed on the buildings as a board?
Well, so right now, I mean, you've got, you've got multiple buildings here. The house wasn't specifically included, I mean, it was included in the RFP as a potential structure that could be used in the future. We said you can't use it right now, it's not habitable. But, you know, you could, you couldn't undertake some projects now if you have the money. During lease negotiations, you know, one thing I wanted to add is that if you guys are considering asking them more questions about their proposal, what I think you need to do is first decide to award the lease to them and then subject to contract negotiations. And in those negotiations, you can sort of flush out those issues and, you know, make sure that you're actually comfortable moving forward.
Okay.
You know, because the lease should have the pesticide plan, management plan as part of it, and you know, you should have the documents that you anticipated attaching to the lease. And so that would, could all get worked out in lease negotiations.
Okay. All right, good. That's really helpful.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, so to go back to the public, you know, the, whether it's, whether or not it's improvement to a public building. So if, for example, they wanted to fix the house up in order to make it a wedding destination and they were the, they primarily benefited from those improvements, is that a factor that would be taken into consideration when you consider whether or not, you know, they have to pay prevailing wage in order to do the work?
I'm not sure how, you know, how much benefit they would get is a factor as much as it is how much, you know, benefit would the town get.
Like the value increase in the property?
The value increases, you didn't have to do that work yourself, you know, if it was a shorter-term lease and you've got this snazzy new building at the end of it, that looks more like a public construction project than a lease.
Thank you.
But you can also, I mean, I know that their proposal sort of didn't have a lot of information about how they'd use the buildings because they didn't have the opportunity to see them, so in lease negotiations, you could also discuss that with them.
Okay. All right, great. Any other questions from other board members?
I'll just get some comments. So there's only two things that I've really heard about, it's looking great and kudos to the crews that are going out there and doing all the work and appreciate the matrix of, you know, what's being done on the different fields and the mowing and whatnot. The other thing that I've heard is about deer fencing and the, you know, the, you had just mentioned it, the wildlife corridors, the aesthetic. There's never been deer fencing up there, as far as I know, other than the mounding of the, all the trimmings at the end of the rows. So when, when those negotiations happen, if it is with Storm Along, I think that we should kind of determine whether or not we are open to deer fencing being added to the, to the, to the orchard.
To what level? Into what level, if any?
If any, to what level, yeah, because there is an aesthetic impact, certainly a wildlife impact. And there's never been deer fencing and it's been an active orchid.
Right.
At one point in time, you know, they're pretty well-producing orchid, yeah.
Got some bear fencing lately, I guess.
Mark, did you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I actually did. So things like deer fencing and like, can you, we put restrictions or, you, we talked about like if you did improvements to the house, but what about the orchard itself? If you require them to put up deer fencing or require them to invest so much in new trees per year or something like that, how does that affect the agreement?
That's interesting, that those types of improvements would arguably possibly be public works construction. I think they're more, they're, they're more temporary in nature, so I don't really foresee a problem there. There also haven't been any cases yet where somebody has applied this public building construction.
To the orchard.
Yeah, well, to public works, I mean, it's coming probably, but there aren't many opportunities for towns to lease out, you know, their property for like a public works purpose and, and come across that. I mean, I think that all of that would probably be under some type of farm management plan. You know, I would expect that they would have some thoughts about what they want for deer fencing and you could decide what you want.
Right.
To be used, you know, how you'd want your property to be used. And of course, conscom, you know, would.
Be part of that discussion.
Part of that discussion for their parcels.
Right. Okay, good. So I didn't know, I know Mr. Pickard's in the audience, I didn't know if he had any questions or comments he wanted to share. He's been part of this from the inception.
I would just say that the, if the deer fencing is consistent with the APR regulations, that you really need to consider that as far as the viability of the orchid and the opportunity for somebody to produce and have a viable business up there. It's, deer populations are different than they were and that's something that needs to be managed and it needs to be managed along with the conservation parcels. It's important that those two kind of go together, but it's an important aspect of running a productive orchid. Also, if the orchard lease is written such that if there's a grant applied for, for something like the deer fencing and it's grant money, how does that affect the, you know, the improvement part of that going along with the lease where?
Who applies the grant?
It's not town money, it's not.
Yeah. I mean, it would depend on the grant. I think a lot of grants they could apply for and with our support, but that would also, you'd have to comply, they'd have to comply with the grant requirements.
Okay.
Okay.
But he also raised a really good point about the APRs, anything they do has to comply with the APR.
Right. Okay, so I didn't, I don't, we don't have a motion. I know Anthony just wanted to show quickly.
I brought one.
Oh, awesome. An overview of the work that's been done today. The orchid certainly looks amazing. Lots of hard, hard work is going into this compared to what it was a few months ago.
Yeah, Tim did a great job trying to show the progress that's been done up there and he color-coded it, which has been fully completed, fully completed meaning.
Color-coded?
Yeah. And what's partially completed, what they still have to mow, you know, certainly the drought is actually in our favor in one way because it's slowed down the grass growth, but, you know, here are some pictures that Tim wanted to share. It's, it's night and day from the springtime. You know, the folks up there are doing a, you know, a great job in keeping it presentable and picking up some of the twigs that were left from the pruning that was done in February. So more work to do, but, but certainly Tim's crew has been attacking that as well. So it's looking good.
Wow, yeah.
They moved, what is it, fields, like 14 or 17 or something way down the hill beyond the Dockers House.
Down to the lake.
No, beyond that, on the other side of the street, which hasn't been, Charles hasn't bode that in 15 years.
Charles has a boat in 15.
It's, it's literally the orchid, the field beyond the Dockers House where the parking lot is.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it looks fabulous.
Even down near the cottage, too.
Even the field that goes down beyond the cottage, right.
Yeah, that's the next one.
Wedding venue?
Yeah, nine, I think.
Yeah.
That goes down to the water.
Beautiful property.
Little pond in front, yeah.
You know, that'd be, that's just a great piece.
Yep.
Shakespeare on the Park.
Okay, good. So can we do a motion even though it's not on the agenda?
Well, it's discussion dependent, right?
It's, yeah, it's a discussion dependent and.
I'd like to move forward with this. Is the motion to award the lease to, to Storm Along, subject to negotiations?
That's.
Right. And we're okay based upon what we posted, in your opinion? So that the agenda item was update, discussion about recommendations from the Nagog Orchard Ad hoc Working Group. Do you feel that we're covered?
I think that's okay, yeah, and we're not signing the lease yet.
No, right.
So basically with, in speaking with Jenny today, Cindy, I grabbed that little son article and kind of asked her to craft a motion.
Okay.
To have town council, town administrator work with whoever the board wants to, to look into negotiating with Storm Along.
Right. Yeah, I definitely want to be involved in that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I put in, I put in me, well, I put in town council and Anthony and feel free to add Cindy to that.
Thanks.
Do you want somebody else on there with you?
I don't think so. I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
That's good. I move, I move to award, I move the select board award a lease to the Nagog Orchard to Storm Alongsider LLC, the respondent to the town's request for proposal issued on May 17th, 2022, subject to successful lease negotiations with respondent and to authorize the town administrator, the town council and Ms. Napoli to engage in lease negotiations with the respondent.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Gary.
Doesn't have to be me, the only reason I put me is because you had that in the article. But if you.
I don't, I never even saw the article.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's funny.
Well, it can be you, it can be you or Ron.
It could be, right, it just, yeah, whatever Cindy wanted.
I never saw the article.
Really?
It's funny, yeah, no. Okay, motion made and seconded?
Yeah, made and seconded. Roll call vote, Mr. Decost.
Decost is aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. Napoli.
Aye.
Mr. Ronbacher.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, 5-0. Congratulations, Storm Alongsider.
Thank you.
Jenny, thank you very much for everything.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
7B, discuss forming a committee to explore real estate tax relief for senior citizens.
So Mr. Chair, Mr. Ronbacher requested this be on the agenda. Mark, do you want to take it?
Sure. So Peter Burwell, a few weeks ago, he presented something about a presentation, a presentation about Nagog. There's a bill in front of that house right now in Senate. I think it's been renamed to HDP 5001 to do senior citizens tax relief by basically if you, after a means test, senior house, a senior who's been in their house for at least 30 years might have the set value of their house frozen so that it doesn't increase over time for tax purposes. So the recommendation from Peter was that we form a, a committee to go forward to study with this debate for a little, for a little tick. So I was just helping move it along from, from his perspective.
Let him know that Peter's in the audience, too.
Yes, and Peter is in the audience.
Peter is here, just to let you know, Mark.
Okay, so he can speak to his presentation more if you want more information. I know the bill was being discussed today, I don't know if Peter was there or not.
Mr. Barbel, would you like to speak to the board or do you have anything to add?
Honestly, I'd like to speak to the board. I'm not much of a speaker. I need to maybe redirect some of the things that Mark just said. I've been working, Pete Barbel, Goldsmith Street, Luthen, Mass. Thank you. I've been working two years on a problem that I've noticed as a part of the Board of Assessors, it's become obvious that throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the country, perhaps throughout the world, senior citizens retired on fixed incomes are struggling with their property taxes, which are based on, not their fixed incomes, but based on skyrocketing value of the home they live in. Home values went up, I've, I've seen some going as high as 40 and 50% in one year. That's a problem and I, I put together a package that was submitted to Jim Arquero and I asked him to put it into the legislature for me and he did, but he asked me to perhaps as well as that, form a committee to study the problem, very much like the committee that exists in Westford. Okay? To study the problem of helping senior citizens with their, with their taxes. And that's a little bit bigger than just the bill that I put forward, which was heard and no, I was not there today, it was written testimony only, Mark. It was heard in the joint Senate Committee on Revenue this morning and after 400 calls, I still don't know what happened, but that's, that's our legislature. But let's talk about the committee, the forming of a committee. I'm going to do it one way or the other, okay? I think it has more credibility if it's sanctioned by the town. The purposes that I see for this committee are not only to promote the bill that I'm trying to pass through, but to look at other towns and see what they are doing to help senior citizens, to check out the Mass COA and see what they're doing to help other senior citizens. And as well as that, there is the possibility that we can, we can do some things that are above and beyond. One of the things we have in this town is a, an exemption for seniors today. This exemption is pitiful. It's, it's almost impossible to qualify for. In our town, 0.5% of our seniors have qualified for the one exemption that we allow in this town. The state has a number of different exemptions and many other towns are doing local options, Sudbury, Norwell, other towns I could list. So those are the things we could do also and, and we could explore all the options that are open for seniors, not just the one that we have today. And I think we desperately need to advertise this. And I think we desperately need to advertise this to the seniors, much more than we have done today. So I'd like to form the committee. I'm going to form a committee, just to keep on a good side of Jim and have him on my side. And it really would be, I think, a lot better if it were sanctioned by the town.
Thank you.
So the committee would be, would put these, all of these ideas together and then come back to the Select Board? If we, if we charge the, if we're creating a committee or giving you the, what do you want to call it, the charge?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you need to come back to the Select Board if you found a way to make other senior citizens available of what's, what's here in town today.
Oh, sure, but as far as exploring other, other possibilities?
If we were to pick up, for instance, fifty-two and a half C?
Yes.
As a, I think that's the one we do have. If we took any of the others, the Chapter fifty-nine exemptions, you'd have to come and get a vote from the board for that.
But is your ultimate goal to present a, some sort of bill to the legislature?
That's my ultimate goal.
Right, so, and, but is your, is this, is that the goal of the committee? Or is the goal of the committee to just help inform you to develop this, this bill, to present it?
One of my thoughts for the committee would be to help with that bill.
Okay, okay.
Just as one thing, not, not the only thing.
That's not to be all, no.
Yeah, I understand. It's, it's much broader than that. Okay.
I would, I would recommend one BOS member with an alternate, one COA member with an alternate, and three interested citizens.
Okay.
That way you have a five-member board, and you have an alternate on each of the main of the COA and the BOS. Is that?
Board of Assessors.
Do you need a Board of Assessors?
FinCom?
FinCom.
I don't see the FinCom. I think Mark would like the FinCom, but I don't see their interest in being able to do anything with this. Board of Assessors, you know, they're laser-focused on evaluating houses and, but they would be needed to explore more of the options that are available. So I think maybe a Board of Assessors would be a good idea. Not necessarily me.
I'll say, I mean, I think it necessarily should be you, because you and I have been talking about this for beyond the two years. And have had conversations with Jim Arciaro since I got on the board. And a number of different, trying to, trying to look at the Sudbury Means Test and other avenues.
I understand what you're saying, Chuck. You've got to understand that I'm the black sheep on the Board of Assessors. In a place that, where there were five oh votes for about forty consecutive years, there's now many, many four one votes.
Where?
Beach.
Okay, Mr. Rombacher?
So the reason I suggested someone for the FinCom was just because this is going to have a financial impact. If we take money, if we lower the taxes for seniors, we're going to raise the taxes for someone else.
The overlay changes.
So, yeah, so we should just understand that relationship a little bit.
Well, let me explain it.
Be FinCom, it could be something else.
Let me explain. I did a, I did a math model of this, and it turns out that indeed, the state would not have to fund this. That's a good thing, but it would come from other residents in town. And if you do this thing for the people who live thirty years in their homes, I'm guessing maybe ten percent of the seniors, perhaps, on fixed income, it turns out that it would cost the other people like two percent increase. That's less than the CPA, that's less than the transfer station tax that we have, and probably less than the school bus tax that we have to pay, things that we never had to pay before. So, yes, indeed, it will cost others.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to create the committee.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm interested in...
In being a part of it?
Yeah.
I have a question for you. What is the process of creating a formal town committee?
Right down.
We just, we just, we voted in.
We vote to do it.
We, we determine the membership and then we appoint people.
Two methods. It can either be town meeting or the Select Board.
They need a charter, right?
It can be a bylaw committee or it can be a select.
Right.
But we were debating membership. Are we talking about FinCom? Are we talking about the Board of Assessors? Do we want to add someone?
I would just try to keep it as small as possible. When you get a committee too big, it just, nothing gets done.
It's been my experience at Raytheon.
Yeah.
The only problem with the three is what we're encountering with the Personal Advisory Committee is that Mr. Schmidt's gone, so we doesn't have a chance. You know, he can't talk to someone else.
Oh, it's bigger than three?
So we're talking about five?
Yeah, we're talking about five.
Yeah, five's good. I wouldn't go bigger than five.
Right, but no more than five.
I know Mark expressed interest, and if you do, Chuck, there's two BOS, and we can just go without the alternate and say two BOS.
Well, wait a minute, you expressed interest, too.
I did, too, but I, you know, I'm not going to, you've been doing, you've been working hard on this.
I think Mark was, Mark was ambivalent.
Well, if you make it for an alternate...
If you want to do it, Gary, I'm more than happy to step aside.
All right, I would love to, I would love to be a part of it. It's something that I definitely...
I like the idea of buying with two alternates. I think that's a good approach.
Perhaps even an alternate for each position?
More.
So if he can't make it, you can go.
We'll know when two BOS...
I think we can do a Select Board.
We'll put two Select Boards.
Oh, two Assessors.
So two, two Select Board, one COA, and two citizens? Is that what we're saying?
Or Assessor.
I mean, in a way, we have an Assessor on the committee, so...
Yeah.
Well, no, that's if you set it up that way.
I haven't been voted in yet.
He has to be voted in by the Board of Assessors.
I see what you're saying, I see what you mean.
So if we, if we set it up to say, the way that we could get around that is...
He's a citizen, and the assessors are large advisory, so I think that we could, you know, have our kick and eat it, too, if Mr. Barbella wants to be on the board, wants to be on the committee. And I think you do.
I think he needs to be.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I have, I have to stay, I have to keep Jim on my good side.
Okay.
So right now, if you have two BOS, one COA?
Two citizens.
No Assessor? No Assessor.
Don't you need an Assessor?
Yeah, Assessor and FinCom.
Yeah, Assessor.
Yeah, you have to have an Assessor.
Yeah, okay. So one Assessor, two Board, one COA?
Well, we could be cute and just do at-large and kind of agree tonight.
That's what I'm saying.
And Mr. Barbella is going to be one of the citizens at large, who happens to be an Assessor.
That's what I'm saying.
We don't, we don't specifically set it up to be...
Okay.
No, that, that works.
So we have two Select Board.
And it's a working committee to get it done, right?
Two COA? Two Assessors, one COA, two Select Board, one Assessor, one COA, and one at-large?
Two, two CO, two, two Boards, a Selectman, one COA, two citizens at-large.
So no FinCom, no Assessor.
And one of the citizens would be Peter.
I, I don't see a FinCom, but I, I, Mark has got some good points on it. I'm not sure.
I don't, I have no...
I like the main committee committee as just the adjustment. Two citizens, two Board of Selectmen, one COA.
Okay.
Do it that way. If we need to make an adjustment, it's our, it's our committee, we can make the adjustment.
Okay.
Okay, so, so... Okay, let's do that.
Move the Select Board, establish, you get a name for this thing?
Yes, it's the, it's the Explore Real Estate Tax Relief for Senior Citizens Committee.
Okay.
Pick up an acronym for that.
So the Committee to Explore Real Estate Tax Relief for Senior Citizens.
Okay, so move the Select Board, create a committee for the exploration of real estate tax relief for senior citizens to include two members of the Select Board, one member of the COA, and two members at-large.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Gary. Roll call vote, Mr. Decost?
Decost, a favor.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Rombacher?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes as well, so the committee is formed.
Appoint.
Yes, so, motion to appoint Select Board members? Yeah, but I mean...
Do we have to make a motion with that, or?
Or do we just?
Yeah, but then we saw the, the Select Board appoint to the previously created committee, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Decost on the Select Board.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Gary.
About Mark?
No, Mark said he...
He yielded to Gary.
Okay, perfect, all right.
Roll call vote, Mr. Decost?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Rombacher?
Yes.
The chair votes in favor, and let's appoint Mr. Barbella.
Well, do we want, do we have to post it first before we appoint Mr. Barbella, or can we appoint him tonight as a member at-large?
Post it, please.
Yeah, it probably makes sense to post it. Just, I need to know what the...
Well, because we have two citizens at-large.
Yeah, so we can get this on the website, get this out there this week. And do you want it ready for the eighth? That doesn't leave much time, but we certainly can do that, which means the applications...
In two weeks, Ron?
Yes, she'll ease.
Or do you want to bring this back on the second meeting in August?
If we can do it on the eighth?
It's just, it's a short window.
But Diana, whatever she can do, if she, if she can do it.
All right, I'll, I'll talk to her. If we can figure it out, I'll follow up and then...
Someone needs to tell the COA they need to appoint someone.
Right, actually, you're going to need some time for these boards.
That's the only board that needs to be...
It's the only board, right.
Each other, COA, right.
Yeah.
Raffin Fidelli?
Sorry?
We're talking about the COA member, and I, I know one COA member who wants to be on this board.
Yeah, there may be a few.
Okay. All right.
So we report back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barbella.
Okay, Town Administrator update, Mr. Unsaldi, take it away.
All right, so the first item for you to consider is the Fourth Amendment to the Contract for the Design Services. That's LLB for the Senior Center. There's two things that we're looking to have done is, one is the site survey of thirty-one Chattock Street, so that's actually, that piece, doing the extension onto the back and coming up with the new ANI that we would present before the Planning Board. It's something that we need to do. LLB can, their survey, or we said, you know, since you're doing it, why don't you kind of give us a price on that, and they have. And the second issue is a solar feasibility study that, you know, I know I was speaking with Mark. He's like, oh, what do we got to pay for that? I'll save you the time, Mark, on that. You know, it's something that wasn't included in the original design, but as we were going through some of these meetings, we certainly thought including Sustainability Committee, we thought that, you know, we really should explore the solar. We're kind of learning from lessons with the library now with the costs and installing. And I think Mark would attest that, you know, installing the solar construction is, would ultimately be cheaper than installing it after the fact that the library's trying to do, so we'd just like to see if it's, if it's feasible to install solar and what that would look like, to hopefully reduce the overhead cost of the Senior Center.
Question about the engineer. Is Mr. Stoddard still on a contract basis?
He is.
Instead of spending nineteen thousand dollars on the survey, is this something that we could employ him for?
Oh, you know what, Chuck, that's a great point that I totally slipped my mind, too. If you want to approve this with that contingency, to first check with Chris, I can talk with Chris and see if he can do that. If he can do that, great. If not, at least we can move forward with it.
Need to approve it, and then there's no sense of urgency to get Chris on board.
No, I'll, I'll make that call tomorrow morning and say, Chris, this is what we need to get done.
Which is nineteen grand.
Yeah, no, you know what?
We're already paying an engineer.
Chuck, that would be my first preference with, to do that, so I would push hard to see if Chris can do that. And that makes great sense to do. So, or if you want to delegate that to me, that somehow that, you know, first explore it in the event that you can't, then okay, or something to that degree.
Let's do a, let's make it, let's vote it in and just, and just ask that Chris is the first choice.
He can do it, we don't have to...
I certainly won't spend nineteen thousand without totally exhausting that, because I think that's a great idea.
This is amendment to the contract with LLB, though.
Yes. So we wouldn't, I would just tell LLB, you know what, we're going to be okay with the site survey. I'm going to talk to Chris and see if Chris can do it.
Okay, so when we take a motion tonight, we're just going to do the, the contract services for the solar?
I, to keep things moving, I prefer both, just in case Chris says, listening Anthony, I'm completely swamped and I can't get to this for two to three months, then at that point, you know, we, we can decide what we have to...
You're going to authorize it.
So can we do an up to?
That's what I was going to, yeah, I was going to try to edit it that way, Mark, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Something along those lines.
I do have one question before we vote it. If you go to the Design Services page in their documents, it breaks the twenty-nine four eighty into three different buckets, and those numbers add up to, add up with the solar and the survey, but then not directly. The architecture piece is somehow subdivided between the survey and the solar.
Yeah.
It has...
It's ten four fifty on the recitals page in nineteen three.
It's two subcontractors.
Two different...
But to Mark's point, on page two of the agreement amendment from LLB, it's three buckets. Architecture gets twenty-seven hundred bucks. Survey, BSC group gets seventeen-three, and the BER gets ninety-five. What if I, let me just throw this out, that move the Select Board authorize Anthony to execute the Fourth Amendment to the Contract for Design Services with LLB for the Senior Center to include site survey and solar feasibility as needed?
Right.
Up to twenty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Right.
Can I have a second?
I'm second, bud.
Okay, you good with that, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, so motion made by Chuck, seconded by Mark. Roll call vote. Anthony, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine, because Gary and, and Mark have been working on this, so Mark will be working on this with me, so.
Roll call vote, Mr. Decost?
Decost, aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Rombacher?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Great.
All right.
Next item is, in your packet was a request from the American Diabetes Association.
American Diabetes Association.
Yep.
For their Tour de Cure on Sunday, August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. This is something that I, I asked Chief Panard to research. He's worked with the American Diabetes Association. He, Fire Department, DBW, are all okay with this. And we're just looking for okay from the board.
We saw this last meeting, right?
Yeah, we did.
It was just now's the form.
Right, now's the formal vote on both of these requests because of timing.
Read the motion for me?
Oh, sorry, let me...
Oh, that's, here, here.
I got it.
Move that the Select Board vote to approve the request of the American Diabetes Association to use town roads for the Tour de Cure on Sunday, August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Cindy. Roll call vote, Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Rombacher?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. The motion carries four zero.
The next item, Mr. Chair, is a similar request to use town roads for Bikes Not Bombs Bike-A-Thon. And that's on Sunday, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The roads that will be impacted are on the screen right now. It's a hundred mile route. Again, Chief Panard has looked at this. Chief Carter has weighed in, and DBW, Director Steve Yali, are all okay with this request.
Great. All right, we are on to eight C.
Motion, yeah.
If you want to read that motion.
It's updated.
Unless there's any discussion from the board. Nope.
Move the Select Board vote to approve the request for Bikes Not Bombs for use of town roads for their Bike-A-Thon on Sunday, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Gary. Roll call vote, Mr. Decost?
Decost, aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Rombacher?
Aye.
The chair votes yes. The motion carries five to zero.
Next item, actually, this is another topic that Ryan's going to be working on, getting the MSBA some of the paperwork. So I'll, I'll let Ryan speak, his first time reporting to the board, so Ryan, you want to go through this one?
Sure, sure. So, and this is a request to the board where we have to assign a chief executive officer. So if you notice, in terms of how the proposed motion is set up, there is a gap, a vote to a point blank. So it's really up to the board's discretion in terms of who they want to assign as a chief executive officer. An MSBA project like this is going to have numerous things coming to the chief executive officer for approval and, you know, throughout the course of the project. You know, in talking... with Anthony about this, and talking with the MSBA, you know, the MSBA is essentially indifferent, if the board were to, say, assign the chair, this responsibility, that would be fine, but, you know, for expediency's sake, you may also want to consider assigning Anthony for this as well. We do get a lot of information in, we have to turn it around quickly, so, you know, in speaking with Anthony, I think I thought would be, or our preference would be to have you assign Anthony to do this on your behalf, but any of the larger, and again, these are really more for, you know, processing bills, you know, more ministerial elements that it was.
Yeah.
Right, so, just so that we don't have to then, you know, take up your time with that.
I don't decide anything, right? This is, we have a, a committee that the select board formed for Shaker Lane, and that's all going to run through this. This is just those, you know, bureaucratic paperwork.
And is it your preference as to you?
It, it's just easier.
Okay, all right.
You know, it's like, we probably could have submitted this form last week and checked the box and got rid of this, but we had to bring it to the board because they were looking for the CEO, you know, and I can't have you sign it unless the board authorized it, so it's easier as things like that come up, that if, if they, if you appoint just me to sign it, that we can move things along with that.
For example, if you, if you, if you do assign that to Anthony, then we'll have to get a certified vote, get that into MSBA, that it's very specific as to what their expectation is along all, everything that they get in, so it's a lot of jumping through many, many hoops to get us into a place.
So, every time you voted, we have to wait till the vote, till the minute comes to the board?
Sure, yeah. It makes sense.
I guess I would ask that, it becomes part of your member updates, though, when you do have to do it.
Anytime that, if I had something, certainly I can provide the board with, with an update during TA review, TA section.
Any further discussion from the board?
No, I think this is in any of the other school building projects we've done, I believe, it has been the town administrator, with the superintendent as the authority for the schools, but the CEO, I think, has always been the town administrator.
Right, and in this case, the specific form also is the, would be the, well, in this case, would be the, wherever you assign as chief executive officer, and then separately, I think, the school superintendent signs on it as well.
Right, and they were like, well, you know, town administrators normally sign this, and that's not what it says, I'm, I'm not the CEO, you are the CEO, so certainly I'm not going to listen to MSBA and say, just sign it, it's not the right way to go.
Right, yeah. All right, any other discussion?
Good with Anthony?
Yep.
Move the select board vote to appoint Anthony Unsaldi as the Littleton Chief Executive Officer with the, Officer with the authority to execute all agreements with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, regarding the Shaker Lane Elementary School Project on behalf of Littleton Select Board, and to authorize the town administrator to forward the executed initial compliance certification, ICC, Town of Littleton, Shaker Lane Elementary School, MSBA Project Number two zero two one zero one five eight zero 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 five to the MSBA.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Gary, roll call vote, Mr. DeCoste?
DeCoste, aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Napoli?
Aye.
Mr. Ronbacher?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. The motion carries five to zero, I can't remember my name, it's getting late, let's approve the minutes of July sixth and July eleventh. Does anyone have comments or corrections? I did read through them, and I didn't find anything that I would like to change. Nope.
No.
All right.
Move the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes of July sixth and July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, contingent on the inclusion of the listing of meeting exhibits.
Second.
Motion made by Chuck, seconded by Gary, roll call vote, Mr. DeCoste?
DeCoste, aye.
Mr. Wilson?